I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the City Council, August 26th in the council chambers. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Thank you, Council President. Council Pro Tem Banks.
Present.
Councilman Brightwell. Councilman Cruz.
Present.
Councilwoman Haynes.
Present.
Councilman Hicks.
Here.
Councilwoman Hoag.
Here.
Council President Mandelbaum.
Present.
Thank you, we have a call.
Everyone can please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on our agendas are appointments. Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
I would like to ask Stephanie Hill Ross, Larry Howard, and David DuVicay to come forward, please. I'm asking tonight for you to make the appointment of Stephanie Hill Ross, a longtime Southfield resident, who also has a background in art, to fill a vacancy on the Southfield Public Art Commission. And you'll recall that earlier this year, we appoint, with your approval, the appointment of David DuVicay was approved for the Downtown Development Authority. He was filling the last months of a term that had not fully expired. I'm now asking that you reappoint him to the Downtown Development Authority Board. And then, we still had a vacancy on the DDA. So, next to me, to my left, is Larry Howard. Mr. Howard is from the Howard Realty Group. He manages the Nine Mile, Greenfield Plaza, also a number of other properties in the city of Southfield, including the Eight Beach Center, Eight Beach and Eight Mile, and a few more.
Sherwood, Levin, and, well, North Lincoln and Greenfield, and the Sunset Strip, and Twelve Mile and Northwestern.
Okay. So, as you know, Mr. DuVicay has two projects in the DDA district. The Adana Apartments, which is getting a whole new landscaping redo, this, I saw it last week and this week, and of course, is the principal of the Northland redevelopment. So, appointment, appointment, reappointment.
Councilman Brightwell.
This is Chair. I move that we make the appointments and reappointments as presented.
It has been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Cruz, for the two appointments and one reappointment, as described by the mayor. Any comments or questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And now, I'll ask the city clerk to do the official swearing-in.
We will all swear in two gentlemen back to, once again, back to our DDA, in the middle of our DDA. So, this is for Mr. Larry Howard and Mr. David DuVicay.
DePuy.
DePuy. Please raise your white paper. And I will stop and be swearing in. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the City Charter of the City of Southfield.
The City Charter of the City of Southfield.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of the Downtown Development Authority. According to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Stand, Councilman.
And now, you all swear on this, Stephanie Hill Ross. I just want to be certain. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of Michigan. And the City Charter of the City of Southfield. And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of the Public Arts Commission. In and for the City of Southfield, County of Oakland, and State of Michigan. And for the City of Southfield and the State of Michigan. And County of Oakland. According to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we're gonna come down, to make it easier. The Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedure for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impotent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language towards any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council, and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. The council may not provide responses to public comment during the meeting. If you have provided your contact information when you signed up for public communications, the city will provide a more formal response to you in the near future. Each speaker will have three minutes. I'd like to remind everyone to please silence your cellphones and give respect to each speaker. We also have a number of people who have signed up, a number of residents who have signed up to speak on different development plans that we have this evening. So, development plans such as the Kroger gas station and some rezoning will have a chance to speak during the presentation of the public, during the public comment portion of that presentation as well. I don't know if you meant to sign up for general public comment or the public comment for that specific project, but again, that project will have a three-minute comment period as well. Our first speaker is Phyllis Mitchell. Is Phyllis Mitchell here? All right. Our next speaker is Myron Thomas.
Hello, my name is Myron Thomas. I stay in the city of Southfield on McAllister Street, just north of Ten Mile. I've spoken in front of this council twice before, and sent multiple emails to this council, and has yet to receive one response from any of my communication. This is in regards to the ordinances that you have approved, most recently 2016, specifically Section 5, 62, Paragraph 3, where it actually lists out uses that are permitted on property. You actually restricted the ability for people to, you did not apply any land use conditions for that ordinance. As such, I am currently sitting in front of Judge Arvent for my personal property that is to be remediated from my personal property, because inside of your ordinance, you said you're only allowed one trailer. Now, these trailers are 500 feet from city right-of-way. And so, my question is, there are many different ordinances that have been placed on the books for land use. Why is there no land use applied to this, especially when it's not even being seen from the right-of-way of the city of Southfield? And in fact, it's obscured by a six-foot-high fence, and across the other fence is an industrial facility, private property. Secondly, Chapter 45, Section 5, 28 speaks to outdoor storage, and the fact that you have placed outdoor storage as a means to ticket your residence. And I have a ladder outside. I've been told that I cannot have a ladder outside. I cannot have a tractor outside. And when the tree hit my shed, there was no permit on the shed, because the city of Southfield did not require permits when it was built, and therefore, it should have been grandfathered in, allowing me the opportunity to rebuild it, yet I've already paid $175 to the city of Southfield for the right to rebuild a shed, when there is an ordinance that said, "An act of God allows me to rebuild my shed," but I've been instructed not to. This city council is the last resort, because I've already spoke to the building department and the ordinance department, and they said, "You made the rule, and therefore, you have to amend the rule." Thank you.
Thank you. And if, Mr. Thomas, if you can resend your email, I don't recall seeing it, but if you can resend it, we can take a look. Thank you. Our next speaker is Calvin Boylston.
Yes, I'm Calvin Boylston. I stay at 20123 North Lockmore, here in Southfield. I wanted to speak about the Kroger gas station. I oppose it. We have two gas stations on the corners already, and the 12-mile area is kind of congested area, anyway. I went to the council, I mean, the planning council, and the councilmen there asked me to do a traffic study. Well, they did a traffic study in the parking lot, not the streets. I want to know what adding that gas station is going to do to the traffic on 12 Mile and Evergreen there. Also, one of the representatives of Kroger said, you know, "People have complained about this Kroger. It's not up to standards. It's not the standards of other Krogers," and it's not. He said, "Well, if they get the gas station, well, maybe they'll put some money in, improve the Krogers. Why can't you just be a conscientious business owner and improve your product, anyway, and keep it up with the other Krogers, such as on Loser and 15 Mile, and some others?" I'm not going to go down the list there. So, also, they said that 30 percent of their customers would use the gas station there. And we have a whole lot of residents here who don't want a third gas station here, and I think it's more than that. And I admire the council. I think you guys do a great job here in Southfield. You always do what's best for the residents and for the city. And this here is just what's good for Krogers. I don't see where it's going to give us that much, they say 30 percent. Well, they can go on Greenfield and get their gas, not that much farther away. Don't need another gas station. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stephanie Hill Ross.
I thought it was a signage. I'm sorry.
No worries.
Yes.
All right. Our next speaker is Jeanette Eisenhower.
I'm Jeanette Eisenhower. I live at 28459 Fontana. I moved to Southfield in 1976, so I'm a long time, and you can say old, resident. And I am here to speak to the proposed gas station at Evergreen and 12 Mile. I have memories of that intersection before the high school was even built, and I've seen a lot of changes in Southfield throughout my residency, so I'm not opposed to progress, but I just don't see the need for a third gas station at this intersection. I've been to the two previous planning meetings, and I know Kroger has amended their blueprints, footprint, whatever you want to call it, to adjust it to the commission's requirements, but I still object to the fact that that will be a third gas station, and I can't think of another intersection in Southfield that has three gas stations. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Emma Cartel.
Carter.
Carter.
I'm probably going to repeat what other speakers have said. I'm sorry. It might be my mass. But I don't see any advantage to having a third gas station at 12 and Evergreen. This is supposed to be, or they were trying to get this to be, a retirement area for people. It's hard enough to get around at 12 Mile and Evergreen, and I can't see any benefit. As I drive down Evergreen, as I'm going toward Birmingham, Beverly Hills, I see no gas stations. Why? Because they want that community to remain quiet, a, really, a bedroom community. And that's what we want for Southfield. We want progress, but we don't want it at the sake of, really, the beautification of Southfield and the quietness of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brenda Hudson.
I'm here at the outside of Loser.
Okay. Our next speaker is Wanda Carter. Cart? Is it Carter?
Carter. My name is Wanda Carter. I live at 28405 Berkshire, which is in Kingsley Estates at 12 Mile and Evergreen. I won't be saying anything differently than what the others have already said, in that we already have two gas stations at 12 and Evergreen. There is no other, excuse me, no other intersection in Southfield that has three gas stations, and there really is no need for an additional gas station at 12 Mile and Evergreen, due to the fact that we have a great deal of traffic in that area as it is. There's also the environmental issue. Once you start constructing there, there's going to be additional emissions that will be in that area, so there really is no use for an additional gas station in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Karen Ray.
My name is Karen Ray. My address is 28062 Fontana Drive. I agree with all the other residents. I'm here to speak about the extra Kroger gas station. The main reason I feel that we really don't need, not, there's already two gas stations there, but 1.7 miles away, Kroger has a huge gas station. There's almost eight to 10 pumps. Matter of fact, I stopped there the other day. The gas was $3.88, so I drove to Detroit, because all the stations in Southfield are really 20 to 30 cents higher. Now, we get to use our Kroger card to get 10 percent off, 10 cents off, but it's not worth it. And then, we already have two gas stations in that area. It's a crowded area, so we don't need a third gas station. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Linda Trotter.
I'm Linda Trotter. I live at 28418 Fontana Drive. I am, again, going to speak with my neighbors in regards to the Kroger's gas station. I do not believe that we need that gas station. Nowhere else in Southfield do you have three gas stations within a quarter of a mile of each other, in a residential area. Currently, we have two gas stations on Evergreen, and when you add another one, we're going to have more congestion at that area. We're going to have people going out of business, and we do not need to have, in our community, again, areas where we have businesses that are boarded up, because no one wants to purchase them. With three gas stations, it's not going to make a profit, like we had when, telling my age in the district, in this community, Farmer Jacks that went out of business over there on Loser and 11 Mile. That area stayed vacant for quite some time, and finally, in the past year, we have some businesses that will maintain it. We don't need the blight that will occur when we have all of these different cars coming in and out. Currently, I can hear from my, drive from my bedroom, all of the cars going up and down Evergreen Road. We do not need to have all of that excess in that area. At this time, I hope and respectfully ask that you do not agree for this development. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Williams.
My name is David Williams, 20216 North Lockmore. And a lot of my neighbors have spoken, and they all had extra time. Could I take their time? But my point is, Kroger is not a good partner for our neighborhood. Let me remind you, this proposal has been brought forward before, five, between five to 10 years ago. The council at that time voted it down. Guess what Kroger did? We had two in Southfield. They left the Cornerstone Plaza on Greenfield and Providence. And guess where they moved to? They moved to Oak Park. Good for Oak Park. Oak Park gave them 7.5 acres of land. They took it. They ran away from our community, and now they have the gall to come back and ask us to rezon our property. Why would we do that? We've been complaining before all this started, 15, 20 years, they are not spending what they are supposed to spend. I'm talking about it. Kroger is not the only parcel on 12 and Evergreen. There are 30 small businesses that don't even have the right to use the parking lot there. 30! And now, they have the gall that we should rezon. The Kroger on Greenfield has done well for Oak Park, that's fine. Some of our neighbors can go drive two, three miles and get their points. The parking lot on 12 and Evergreen is barely two acres. And again, Kingsley Estate is an older neighborhood. I'm happy to say we're getting single families back in. It's definitely an older. And you want us, with the traffic, if you are coming out of Kroger, and you want to make a left to go south, good luck with that, because you have to cross two lanes to get into the middle lane, and that is traffic congestion. So, I'm not loyal to Kroger. If they want to pick up and go, so be it. And that parking lot there on Providence and Greenfield, you think those neighbors are happy? And we want to benefit them by rezoning. I say no to all three proposals, and I want to thank my community for showing up and having our backs. Thank you very much.
I'd like to remind everyone to give proper respect to the speaker and not add additional comments. Our next speaker is Keith Harris. Our next speaker is Maureen Schwartzoff.
Pardon me, I live at 20216 North Lockmore. I'm here also as a member of the community, Kingsley Estates. I completely oppose three gas stations. I oppose the rezoning of the use of that property. I think that everyone who has spoken before me has stated the case. I really do hope that the council does look at the review and decide that it is not good for our community, and I think for the safety and well-being of our community, it should be a no to Kroger on this situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Robert Thompson.
I live at 28445 Fontana, and I just want to encourage you to open the gas station for Kroger at 12 Mile and Evergreen. I just, I think it is worth... I, I just, I, I, I think it is worth, worth doing. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Garland McWilliams.
My name is Garland McWilliams. I live at 14641 Pennsylvania Street, right off of Greenfield in Mount Vernon area. Good news is, you know, I've come here before in regards to repaving streets in my area. They have started the repairs on my street and also Pierce, and that's the good news. So that's greatly appreciated by myself and my neighbors. Secondly, um, the Kroger site on Greenfield near Mount Vernon, uh, and I've, I'm listening to my, my fellow, uh, Southfield residents talking about Krogers. Well, you know, I live right around the corner from them, and every time I went in there, I had to complain about it. They had awful, the restrooms are awful, and it was, they weren't a good partner for our community. So what I'm hearing here now, you know, it just, don't give, don't give Kroger's two cents worth of, of room. They don't, they don't, they don't deserve it. Next, what I want to talk about is the, uh, that, that site that's vacant out, vacant now where Kroger's was. It's, my suggestion possibly is it would, maybe it's a good site for a Walmart. You know, I'm just throwing that out there. I don't know whether there is any other plans for that site, but, you know, just something to think about. And, uh, my last thing I want to talk about, in the past, I've been here and there's been liquor stores and gas stations approved. People asked for a cannabis shop, and I don't know how that went, but I don't think we need any more liquor stores, especially in gas stations or any cannabis shops. You go down on 8 Mile Road and you see all the cannabis shops down there, and, you know, I, I lived in Detroit for many years, and in some areas of Detroit, you had every other block that had a doggone liquor store, and I don't want to see that in, in Southfield. It doesn't, you know, you, you're just asking for trouble. Um, let's see, one more thing. Oh, the site where the Stars Theater was. It's vacant, been vacant for years. I don't know why it closed. I don't know. But, um, what are the plans for that site?
All right, your time is up.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Greg Keeler.
Greg Keeler, resident of the city of Southfield. Um, last week, um, after I asked my questions, Mr. Zorn responded, and I would like to know whether I'd be getting those response that he gave in writing. Second, if not, why not? I believe Mrs. Zorn was appointed in 2014. The questions that was asked me about was in 1999. So were you in the meetings? How do you know about these meetings? I have foreseen some of the things that he has said, and each one of them, they said they don't know about. I've lived there before 1999, so there was no letter sent out to the residents asking if we do or do not want to have a sewer line put on our street. Now, you may have spoke to Lawrence Tech and somebody else, but you also had plans to put an alternative line in, which you never made it in. Why not? The question I asked was, should a resident be given a ticket and have to go to court for not connecting to a non-existing sewer line? Not real, make believe? The subject is non-existent. Not anything else you want to talk about, non-existent. So that is a question I want to know. Should you have to connect to something that doesn't exist? Can you provide anything that states that the resident said no in that Lawrence Tech? Thank you.
Mr. President, as I said last week, the ticket is written because the septic system has not...
That's not the question I asked.
No.
The question I asked was...
Tickets are only written if your septic system is failing, and, and that's after extensive notices.
I agree with you.
But you're, you know, you're asking, no one has been issued a, a ticket because there's no line. Your option then is to rebuild your septic system.
So you're saying there's never been issued a ticket to a resident for connecting to a sewer line without it failing?
Again, a ticket is only written when a septic system fails, and, you know, it only makes sense. Folks don't have the right to pollute...
Well, along with what you just said, it's only been written when it fails.
Right. It's only written when, when a system fails. You're correct.
Now, what about the second, the residents? When residents said no to a sewer line being connected to a...
Excuse me, your, Mr. Keeler, your time is up.
At any time, you can request through a special assessment to connect, to have a system, and I believe about a year and a half ago, that information was provided to you.
Residents never said no, and when I asked before you came back, there was no such thing.
I know. Our next speaker is, I'm sorry, last name is Hamilton.
I'm sorry, I'm a...
Okay. Our next speaker is Isaac Gofen. I'm sorry.
My name is, I live on Michael, uh, 29490, Southfield. I think we have enough of gas stations at the intersection. I think we have sufficient gas stations at this intersection, so we don't need any more gas stations at the, at this intersection. And what Kroger needs to do is try to sometimes improve their restroom area. All the restroom in the Kroger area is very bad, so we don't need them to come out again with another gas station at the intersection. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lauren McDougal. Is there Lauren McDougal? Okay. Our next speaker is Trina Horton.
My name is Trina Horton. I'm at 20156 North Larkmore, and I just want to be in agreement with my other neighbors that are in the Kingsley Estates, right there at 12 and Evergreen. I don't have additional what they've said, except the fact that I do avoid that area. I don't shop there anymore because of the congestion. Trying to get out on 12 Mile or trying to get out on Evergreen, I just avoid it. I shop elsewhere. I go other gas stations. It's just too crowded there. So, and I've been a resident since 1995, and so I also feel that we don't need the overcrowding. We love the quietness and the peacefulness that Southfield should be. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kathleen.
Yes.
All right. Our next speaker is Gerard Mullin.
Field Dad.
Our next speaker is Pamela Gerald.
Yes.
Good evening to this council, to the city administrator, to the mayor, to the city attorney, and to the city clerk, and everybody in this auditorium. My name is Pamela Gerald. Several meetings ago, you had a gentleman to get up and say something that was so erroneous. And what was stated was that there was an African-American League of Women Voters. Now, I know some of the people with the League of Women Voters, and it's a national organization. That name is copyrighted. So if you have an organization called the African-American League of Women Voters, you are infringing on a name that has been copyrighted. Another thing that was not true, you said that as a result of your girlfriend or wife, I can't remember how you identified the young lady, already had 550 members, and the membership went as far as North Carolina. That's another statement that is not true. There is no African-American League of Women Voters registered in the state of Michigan. Extraordinary statements require extraordinary proof, and I can tell you, if you do have that name registered, you're going to have a battle with the League of Women Voters that have copyrighted that name, and they do have quite a few attorneys that are members of the League of Women Voters. I'm going to curb a lot of what I have to say until Kroger comes up for the public hearing, but I want to give a shout out to our Parks and Recreation Department under the leadership of Terry Fields. This past week, we had a senior appreciation day. I think my calculation is correct because I do know crowd size. I think it was close to 1,000 people there. It was crowded. The band was excellent. The people there enjoyed themselves. Most of the vendors there were very good. I didn't like the fact that a couple of vendors was trying to get people to sign up to say that this was a Medicare requirement, and that's not true, and we'll deal with that at another time. But the staff members there really worked hard putting this event on. They worked really hard promoting this event and the seniors, and everybody showed up. So I want to give a shout out to all the Southfield seniors for showing up because it was a wonderful event, and the band played on.
Thank you. That concludes communications. Our next items are consent agenda. These items are considered routine, non-controversial, or have previously been discussed. Council, do you have any items you wish to have pulled?
Item A and B.
Okay. Anyone else, council? Okay, so item A is the Southfield Resource Officers for the Southfield Public Schools. All right, what is your question?
Uh, my question is, it relates to my position last council meeting.
Hold, hold on. If we can take the conversations to the hall, that would be helpful, so we can all hear the questions. Thank you.
Okay. Seriously, this, this, uh, my objection is nothing to do with the program itself. It's to do with our internal mechanism of contract, uh, contract tracking, and this contract came to us late, so I will be voting no on this item, realizing it will not fail because I'm sure other council members, but from, from a finance and principle standpoint, I would be voting no because the contract is late and is coming to us just now.
Did, did, did you want to explain why the contract is essentially starting in the beginning of August rather than...
So, there was a question regarding contract language. They tried to find the previous contract was, which was unable to be located, so I wasn't a part of some previous meetings that were had last week, but as far as as why it was brought at this point, I don't have an answer for that.
Thank you. All right, and then you can, you can be seated.
Thank you, sir.
And then the second question you had was on the purchase, the replacement of the Javis recording equipment for the court.
My name is Shalonda Hamilton with the 46th District Court. Greetings to the council and the mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Breewill, what's your question?
This item is, um, clearly for clarification, it, I'm getting two numbers when I went through it. The fiscal, uh, impact is 195,000, but then when I get to the recommendation, it says in the amount of 270,000. So what is it? I'm not, um, there's, there's two numbers here that are...
Yes.
Kind of off.
So initially, when we received the quotes, it was 270,000, but once we met with the company, we decided we didn't need all the extra bells and whistles, so we were able to bring down the quotes to 195,000 to replace the recording systems in all three courtrooms.
Oh, okay, I could barely hear you, but...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, are we spending 190,000 or are we spending...
The...
270,000?
195,000.
Okay. Shouldn't this, shouldn't this be amended?
Yeah.
To get the 270,000 out of there?
Yeah, so if I can...
We, we revised, I'm sorry, it was uploaded. I hope you got the second revision of our proposal. It's 195. 195,000 is the total that we're requesting.
There's a second document that we shouldn't be voting on this, was, was before us?
So, Mr. Breewill, the, the original amount that we were requesting was 270,000. They do not need all the equipment, and when we replaced the, the 270 with the 195, they just forgot one part, one paragraph, but in the actual resolution, it does say 195,000.
Yeah, I understand that. And we pay the people now in the city a lot of money to be efficient and for something to come before council with this kind of error in it. It's, um, you know, there's... I, I pushed a couple of years ago for a compensation study to make sure our salaries are very competitive in 85 percentile of all our competitors. And so for this to come to this body, to be approved, and I know, I've been in management a long time, and this is, I, I, I just really don't want to see this kind of stuff coming to our body to be approved in the official document of the city. So, um, so you want me to sign something that I have not seen that is wrong?
So what I'm saying is, I understand your concern, and it will be fixed for the official record. However, the resolution that we're voting on has the correct amount of money that we are using, that we are expending for this item.
Okay. I, I trust you, and I believe what you're saying. So, um, this is, this is, you know, this is sloppy, right? This is extremely sloppy. The resolution has something that I have not seen, and I'm not trying to be hard-nosed or anything, but I, I pushed for salaries for all our workers, and I'm assuming and talking to the people since... to the people since I've been in Southfield. I know most of our workers want to be very good workers, they want to be efficient, and they want to do the right thing. So, I'm just, uh, I'm, I'm just baffled, uh, that I should sign off on something that I have not seen, and it's for a lot of money. I could buy a lot of police cars with this money, or I could buy a lot of law books with this money. So, it's just, that is just, it doesn't make sense.
You did receive the resolution on Thursday with, with the entire packet. It's in the packet that you received. Councilwoman Banks?
Yes, um, can I suggest that this be pulled from the agenda tonight, and the letter fixed? Mr. Brightwell, will that satisfy your request if the correct numbers are in the letter, since this letter is going to be a permanent document in our, um, in our files, and they can come back with the correct numbers, 'cause there are two incorrect numbers on here?
That's fine. I, I don't have a problem with that. I'm Renee Shalide, um, and I, I apologize. I don't know where the confusion happened, but after we went, reviewed the quotes last week, I did upload the letter where both the resolution and the letter had the amount of $195,000. So, I apologize. I don't know where the confusion came in. Maybe I uploaded the letter after the packet had already been put together. But I don't have a problem submitting a new letter.
Yes.
That, that, that makes sense.
And then we can, we can vote on it at our next, um, at our next meeting. Let's have the correct document in front of us, please.
Of course.
Yeah, that, that's, that's the solution right there, and that always has been a solution my, my entire professional life. When something like this pops up, you just submit the correct item, and then it's, it's basically approved, so
Yes, I, I have no problem with that. I have the correct letter saved on my computer. I will be sure that that is the one that gets included in the packet.
Okay, all right, 'cause we would never tell anybody to sign something you have not seen. I appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Banks, for
Are there any other questions about the purchase, however, or, or the equipment or anything like that that we could answer?
No. Okay, thank you.
It's just the numbers in the, um, third paragraph that says recommendation. That's incorrect.
I, I will make sure that it gets corrected. I apologize.
All right, thank you. Counsel?
Mr. Chair?
It, we, it's So, there's a, there's a question if we can approve item B, if we have it corrected in the paragraph before it becomes the permanent record, or do we just pull it for next week? I will, whatever the council's pleasure, we can, we can do that either way.
Just pull it for the next
Yeah, the next meeting.
So, we will pull it for the next meeting, so that's fine.
We, we can work with that. We can work with that. We, we've already worked with the vendors, so we will just make sure that council is satisfied. Again, I apologize, it was a typographical error, but we will, you know, if council needs us to come back for the next meeting, that's not a problem. The installation is not going to occur until the fall, so we can
One week is, is, will be, will not delay anything. Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
There are no further questions. I'd like to move to approve consent agenda items A, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K.
Support?
It has been moved by Councilwoman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to approve consent agenda item A, Southfield Resource Officers for the Southfield Public Schools. Item C, authorization to purchase Apple iPad Pros for the Building Department. Item D, a petition for the addition of the 10-mile Rouge Arm to the Evergreen Farmington Sanitary Drain. Item E, approval of cost participation agreement for 12-mile road resurfacing from Northwestern Highway to Telegraph Road. Item F, an authorization to purchase one Bear Ultimate Training Door from ADS for the Fire Department. Item G, authorization to renew a three-year contract for emergency medical billing services for the Fire Department. Item H, authorization to purchase Expedition Power Stair Chair from Stryker for the Fire Department. Item I, authorization to renew the grant agreement between the State of Michigan, the Michigan Indigenous Defense Commission, Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs, and the City of Southfield. Item J, authorization to exercise an extension of contract for managed assigned council coordinator in accordance with the Michigan Indigenous Defense Commission grant. And item K, the addition of the Capital Improvement Plan Module to the citywide budgeting software. Any questions, counsel? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we move on to the public hearings and site plan portion of our agenda, and the first item is PCZR24-0002, conditional rezoning of Kroger.
Good evening. Uh, this is a conditional zoning, special land use and site plan introduction. PZ, PCZR24-002, PSLU24-009, and PSP24-005. Petitioners Kroger Company of Michigan, property is located at 19991 West 12 Mile Road. Existing zoning is B2 Planned Business. Proposed zoning is B3 General Business as a conditional zoning. Uh, the, the purpose of the rezoning is to construct and operate a gas station at the above address. Hours of operation, 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Total number of full-time employees is six. Maximum per shift is one, normally two during the shift change. Uh, this is, uh, current zoning is B2, and future land use does support, um, commercial rezoning. Uh, these are all the permitted and special land uses in the B2 Planned Business District, and the conditional zoning is limiting specifically to only gas, gasoline stations, um, under the B3. So, all of the other permitted uses in B3 have been excluded in this conditional rezoning request. I think everyone's familiar with the site. Uh, we have, uh, added this illustration regarding public and private storm sewers, because I understand there were some, um, questions, concerns about drainage on the site, so we can refer to that if needed. Uh, existing conditions is the former, uh, bank and, uh, drugstore that are vacant on the corner. Uh, this is a proposed site plan for a fuel station only with a small kiosk, landscape plan, floor plan. It's really only a 22 by roughly six-foot wide kiosk for the cashier, proposed canopy, stations, and then a rendering of what it would be looking like from the entrance, the northern entrance off of Evergreen Road. We did ask them to prepare a traffic circulation study to address other concerns that came up from the public and, and the council in, uh, in the past, and they made several recommendations to help with the flow of, uh, site circulation on the site. These are summarized here on these two slides. Um, they also have put up, uh, some do not enter or do not exit signs at that northern entrance, which I verified today was in place, some additional stopping and striping to help with the, uh, circulation on site. So, with that, I'd like to ask the petitioner to come up and give an overview of the proposed project. I know, I know they have the property manager, the owner, and, uh, other members of the team that will be available after the public hearing to answer questions, but if you want to do a, a quick overview of what's being proposed?
Most certainly. Through the chair, my name is Matthew Pisco, 37225 St. Martins, Livonia, Michigan, representing the Kroger Company of Michigan. Uh, we, we've been through the Planning Commission Study Sessions, City Council Study Sessions, and incrementally, we've tried to provide more and more, uh, comprehensive information about what our operations are and are not. Some of the highlights, it, I, I wrote a ton of notes from the questions, and I, if I can, I'd like to, to, uh, explain what our operation is and it isn't. It's a Kroger fuel station. It's a proprietary, uh, category of the grocery store. It's like the deli or, uh, the meat market. The cash register that's in that kiosk is actually connected to the grocery store. We can't operate it without it. That's why we're more than willing in a conditional rezoning to say, you know what, we're gonna tear down a vacant bank, put the fuel station there. It's contiguous with our grocery store. We're not gonna be, getting any new curb cuts onto 12 Mile and Evergreen, and that this would be operated by Kroger employees. It would mirror the Kroger stores' hours, uh, which are 6 to 10. The, the 30% number is generated from the parking lot. So, 30% of the trips to that fuel station, if it's approved, will come from the Kroger parking field to the station. As, as far as the Kroger, uh, the traffic study that we were asked to perform, uh, it was really to try and quantify what's happening within the shopping center. Can people queue? Can they get in? Can they get out? We identified several issues as far as, uh, you know, I, I'm gonna, it's, it's worth going through in two minutes or less. In, in six years, there was less than, than, uh, it equated to 1.17 crashes per year on the perimeter of that shopping center. Uh, as far as the growth of parking, or, excuse me, the growth of traffic, the proposed fuel station would have no significant traffic impact on the adjacent road network on either 12 Mile or Evergreen. It would be indiscernible from the bank if it were open. Uh, the fuel station would generate 12 or fewer new trips to the adjacent roadways compared to the previous bank, which is insignificant. Additionally, the pro, proposed development will generate 51 or fewer trips at the existing shops at Evergreen, site driveways to 12 Mile Road and Evergreen. So, that cross-merchandising between our grocery store and that fuel center, where we offer discounts, it's not a private club like Costco. For our customers to get, you shop at our grocery store, you can get up to a dollar off at the fuel center, uh, on each gallon of fuel, up to 35 gallons. It's a way to, one, make the shopping center a one-stop shop. It's more convenient. We offer discounts, and it builds loyalty between the stores. And I know in last week's discussion, we talked about the eventuality of, of improvements to the grocery store as a result of growth impact of the fuel station, the marriage of those two. So, we have an opportunity to raise or, or take down an existing vacant bank, redevelop it, help the grocery store, help the shopping center, perform all the improvements that were identified as far as signage, to help within circulation, striping, uh, and the like. So, we, we've, we've gladly looked at the recommendations and said, we want to be good neighbors, and we want to have a safe, uh, shopping center. We addressed the, uh, stormwater management, had the structures act, uh, and that was cleared through the DPW. Um, and if you'll indulge me for a moment, on the investment side, and this, this is, this is addressing some of the issues that were brought up last week that were very important to, for us to acknowledge and address. Between 2019 and 2023, that store has paid almost $490,000 in property taxes. The store has donated 200,000 pounds of food to local food rescue partners since 2020. In investment in the stores, between 2018 and projected spending in 2024, not including a fuel station, Kroger spent 3.23 million dollars in that store, not including what the landlord spent on the streetscape elements and the landscaping and the facade on the building. The total spend for taking the fuel station, or the closed bank down and adding the fuel station, which from an operational standpoint, it's in a 198-square-foot kiosk. Customers do not enter. Everything is either through a credit card at the dispenser or through a cash window at the kiosk. We have no, uh, liquor within the kiosk. Uh, we sell small sundries, uh, cigarettes and gum. Um, and that investment with, with taking the bank down and erecting the fuel station will add another 3 million investment in the city of Southfield for a total of 6.237 million. One point was brought up that people don't shop at the grocery store, 'cause they don't like the offerings. They don't like the condition of the store. I don't know whether, which one, which one to go first. I shop at Eight Mile and Gill. I shopped at that when it was not the most pleasant place to shop for years, 'cause it's near my home. I got the, the fuel station approved there, and it took five years from the time that the fuel station was approved that that remodel and expansion took place to what it is today. It's a magnificent store. I'm glad to shop there, especially since I knew what it looked like before. As far as offerings at the existing store in its existing format, this is, this is almost 18,000 square feet smaller. So, just from a practical standpoint, the store doesn't have the area to have what larger, larger stores have in the way of offerings. And I, I'll finish with the last. It, it's not a quid pro quo. But in a much shorter timeframe, Kroger has committed, if we, we get the fuel station, that will remodel the store within three years, and the landlord will commit to repaving the entirety of the parking lot. That's two years shorter than I've ever seen it, and I'm the guy that's getting these stations approved. It wasn't that fast in Monroe. It certainly wasn't that fast in Livonia. So, that's a much shorter duration, where Kroger is willing to say, in addition to the 3.2 million we've spent in the last five years, we will, uh, commit to remodeling the store within three years with the approval of fuel station. Now, as my wife will attest, I, I love retail petroleum. I've been doing this a long time. I can bore you to tears, uh, and will answer any questions operational about the, the fuel station, about the, uh, underground storage tank system, uh, et cetera. So, thank you.
Thank you. So, we'll have our public hearing now, and then we'll see what questions come up from there?
Um, through the chair, um, due to a personal emergency, and, um, this resident has asked to speak first under the public hearing, if you would indulge her. Thank you.
Okay, so, um, give me one minute, please. Just, uh, so we're gonna have a public hearing now for PZ, PCZR24-0002, conditional rezoning, uh, for Kroger to rezone from B2 Planned Business to B3 General Business. Each speaker will have three minutes. Please give your name and address for the record.
Yes. Um, my name, my last name is Towns, and I live in the area of 12 Mile and Evergreen in the subdivision. I'm right in that intersection where there's already two gas stations there. I just, I'm not, I'm against that third gas station, and I have several reasons why I believe it's not a good idea. First of all, it's not a lot of, um, room there for parking in the beginning with the Krogers that's there. So, and then, right down the street, there is a, um, school, and I've seen a lot of the students that walk through that parking lot on their way out, going to the other side to Evergreen. They walk across that parking lot there, and that could be a danger to those, uh, students coming across in that parking lot. So, and there are several things that I've, uh, heard that there's a friend of mine, she wasn't able to be here. There was a, a situation where she was in the parking lot, and someone came flying through the parking lot, and she just managed to get away for them not to hit her in the car. So, there's two gas stations, and I just don't believe So there's two gas stations, and I just don't believe that it's a good idea to put that third one there. And I've been living in Southfield for several years, and I just believe it's a bad idea.
Okay.
And I just wanted to make sure that I spoke my piece on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the conditional rezoning?
When you come up here to speak for a public hearing, you have to give your address for the record. You don't now?
Please, please continue.
Okay. Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number has been 248-346-0439. I remember several, I'm not in favor of this at all. I remember when Kroger came here before and told the residents and the city council members at the time that if you did not get this gas station, that you was going to pull out, and we told you to get your hat, your coat, and leave. What did you do? You got your hat, your coat, and you left, and you closed down that Kroger by Providence and Greenfield, and just like one of the speakers said, you went to Oak Park. Now, you mentioned the Eight Mile and Gill area. I'm very familiar with that area. It's not two gas stations on that corner. You have a Speedway on one corner at Farmington Road, and you have a credit union there. That gas station is a big distance away from the store across from the Arby's. I'm very familiar with that area. But the attitude that Kroger has, and this representative to say that if we get the approval, then we will invest in the store, you have not invested in this store whatsoever. Now, it appears to me that it might be because a lot of African-Americans shop there. I used to love going to that Kroger store. I go in Birmingham. I go to Northville. I go 15 Mile. I do not shop at Eight Mile and Gill near where you live, and I don't really go up to 12 and Evergreen. There's some great people that work up there, and it's a damn shame that Kroger has not put money in that store for those people that work very, very hard to serve the people in this community. Now, I'm going to tell you, speaking from my standpoint, if you don't want to put money in that store, take that gas station and go elsewhere. We don't want three gas stations on the corner. You didn't do a traffic study of 12 Mile and Evergreen. You did a study in the parking lot. You did not go through SEMCOG, which means Southeastern Michigan Council of Government, to get your traffic studied, because we know the area. I've got a 42-year history with this city, and everybody that got up there and talked about the congestion, they're telling you the truth. I'm not in favor of this, and don't approve this because the election is coming up.
The only reason I came back is to subtract from what the Kroger representative said. He gave you some figures about the donation and how much they've spent. We've been warned not to give names, but the council member that voted them down the first time, he didn't give you the numbers of the losses from Providence and Greenfield, how that place is sitting empty to this day. And he talked about the 30%. Guess who the customers will be coming from? They all will be coming from Two Miles, not of us, that don't have gas stations. They'll be coming from Maple and Lhasa. They'll be coming from Telegraph and Lhasa. They'll be coming from 15 Mile and Woodward, because none of those areas will allow that type of gas station. And that's where most of their customers will be coming while they continue to dump on us. And that is only my statement, and I know that most of you have been to most of the Kroger and make your own judgment. And I thank you very much, and I thank my fellow neighbors for actually showing up when we called them. That's why we at Kingsley Estate have an active participation in this city, and I've been here 35 years.
Harmon Gunther, 19101, Greenspruce, Southfield, Michigan. I'm, because of my condition, I'm a frequent shopper at that store. I know most of the people there. A lot of them help me get to my van to unload my cars, my cart and everything. Very helpful. But like most of the other people said, we do not need another gas station. Four years ago, the last time Kroger was here to put, to tear down the front two stores in the shopping mall, like the Bagel Shop and now Tattoo Parlor, they went for zoning that time also. What stopped them was the property of the CVS store, and the zoning was rejected. I recommend that the city council reject its zoning again. We do not need three gas stations.
Linda Trotter, 28418 Fontana Drive, coming back to speak again in regards to this topic. We need to remember a couple of things. One, there is a high school on 12 Mile. We have buses that go up and down 12 Mile. The congestion in the morning, since they're going to open and operate between 6:00 and 10:00, will be hectic. Students will be put in peril if by some strange chance, there's an accident. Buses will be held back and slowed down. We need to take in consideration of our future, our children. Secondly, the gentleman mentioned, we could have made, we're going to make changes to Krogers if this is approved. In good faith, they should have made changes when Dress Barn moved out. They could have expanded Krogers. They chose not to. So again, I respectfully ask that you do not approve this.
Hi, my name is Carrie Weiss. I am the leasing agent for the plaza that the Kroger is in. Just so you know, I grew up coming to Southfield. My father was a math teacher at Southfield High School. My husband most recently coached Southfield Christian varsity football and also grew up in Southfield. When folks are talking about, we don't want another gas station, I would ask you, do you want another vacant building just like the one on Greenfield? I've been representing this property for about two, maybe three years, and one of the biggest concerns with the local small shop business owners who wish to lease in this plaza are, is Kroger to stay, because if they don't, my business may not make it. We've been approached by clothing boutiques and chocolate shop, I mean, a variety of places, and they just all have the same concern. And so do the tenants that are currently in the plaza, because the fuel center didn't get approved at Greenfield. Look what happened to the Kroger there. We don't want this to happen. This is a very good sign that Kroger actually has chosen this site to have a fuel station because it is their commitment to staying in this plaza and therefore helping the businesses within the plaza to continue to stay in business. And as far as the traffic goes, I wonder if Chick-fil-A, for example, had wanted this site instead of on Telegraph. What the public would think about that? Another issue we're dealing with with Kroger is there are several restrictions, which definitely, you know, hinders our leasing efforts. We were approached by Dollar Tree. They couldn't come here because they wanted to carry grocery items, and Kroger has the restriction on grocery items. So as a leasing agent, looking at national brands with the small pool that we have, we, they all want this fuel station so that they can continue to thrive. And I just ask you to not think as much about Kroger, think about your fellow business owners who would like to have their businesses thrive with this co-tendency.
Good evening. My name is Barrett Holmes. I live at 29143 Evergreen. I live directly behind the BP that's already on the corner of 12 Mile and Evergreen. I just wanted to touch on a couple of things that didn't get brought up. Number one, the effect on the climate. I talk to my kids a lot about the climate. I think it's a huge issue of the planet that we're leaving our children. When we talk about greenhouse gases, fuel emissions, water runoff, Greenlee Institute does a good job talking about the emissions that gas stations, one gas station, does on the corner, let alone three. I live in Southfield. I attend Arizona College School of Nursing in Southfield, which is on Lasher. My children attend Adler Elementary. My son last year attended McIntyre. I became a father at 37 years old. One of my dreams was to walk my children to school. Because of the traffic that exists on Evergreen, I do not walk my children to school. Additional traffic would probably make that extremely non-existent. There's a park down the street on 12 Mile. My daughter affectionately calls it the farm park. We don't walk to the farm park as much as we used to because of the traffic on 12 Mile. And when you push the button for it to change to the white walking man and not the red hand, as I teach my children, it doesn't work. It doesn't change it. We wait five, six, seven minutes. It's very intimidating holding a seven-year-old and a five-year-old's hand at the corner of 12 Mile and Evergreen, hoping nobody jumps the lane, nobody hops the curb, nobody's going too fast, and we watch cars already going 50 to 60 miles an hour. I understand business as well. Prior to going to nursing school, I was a contractor and a builder. I can assure you, the only person who spent money on the, the look of 12 Mile and Evergreen in the past five years since I lived there has been the two gas stations there. I think they remodeled both of the outsides of them, but I haven't seen anything done at that Kroger store. I shop there a lot because I've got mouths to feed, and it's the closest one to me. So I do go over there. I won't say that I don't shop there. But it would have been nice to see maybe some electric vehicle stations being put there, something that wouldn't hurt the climate. But instead, from what I hear from the Kroger organization is, I can make more money, and if you let me make more money, I'll spend a little bit of money in the community. And as a, as a parent of children who lives, works, plays, goes to school in this community, that's not an investment, man. That's corporate greed, and that's why eggs cost $6.
Habib Shamami, 29570 Madeline. Here we go again. It's a shame, three times they came in, and I was told that would never, they will never be able to come again. But out of what I hear, they threaten you guys. It's all threats. And she just did it also right now. I was sitting here. She said, that's the best site for Kroger. I don't see anybody in City Southfield that sees that that site is for a gas station. Nobody. But just because we got threatened and Greenfield, they moved and want somewhere else, now they threaten you guys. If we don't get a Kroger, a gas station here, we'll move Kroger out. You know what? You guys denied Walmart on 12 Mile and Southfield. I wonder which one was bigger? Seriously? But it's a shame. I don't know if you guys take a threat. You should not take a threat from nobody. Okay? I do not take a threat from nobody. But you guys have been threatened and threatened and threatened. The law was, three times, I want you to check the law, to come here, and if they were denied three times, they should never come back. I don't know what changed. Can you guys tell me something changed in the law? Do you guys change the law that fast? Shun. You know, I've been living in City Southfield. I seen you guys aggressive, do the right things all the time. Even, you guys fought with me when I opened a gas station, closed the garage, which was a dirty garage. I opened a tiny store. You guys gave me hell. You know, I had to bring the whole city here to get okay to open a little mini store. What's wrong with everybody here? You know, honestly, I can't believe I'm standing here again for the same reason. You guys got to think about it. It'd be a shame if you guys agreed to this, seriously. Somebody's been threatened too much. Somebody's been, probably corruption in here. Something is going on. Something had to be going on for them to keep coming back. If I kick somebody out of my business, they should not come back for a reason. They should never come back. And you guys are controlling this city, and you guys got to do what you guys got to do. So do not, people in City Southfield, don't take a threat from nobody. If Walmart was denied, I don't think a gas station is better. And honestly, it's going to be so much accident. I own the gas station in the corner. Right now even, how many accidents you think there is in that corner? Before even Kroger gas station exists, can you imagine? I hope you guys will take responsibility if something happens to anybody. So think about it. Thank you.
I'd just like to remind everyone to give respect to the speakers.
Name is Garland McWilliams, 15641 Pennsylvania Street. I had lived right around the corner from the Krogers that they closed on Greenfield in Mount Vernon. Krogers has no credibility. Every time I went in there, I had to complain to the manager about the cleanliness of the store, everything. The people who worked there did their best. I talked to them, and they said, well, nothing they could do about it. They come in and they want to basically blackmail us to do what they want to do. No. Don't let this happen. Don't let this happen. They've shown me what they can do at the store that they did have, and they did nothing. Then they want to open up another gas station where there's already two gas stations there. My nephew went to school down the street, and the traffic is really heavy there, and he was hit by a car. He did recover, but he still has life injuries that he has to deal with and everything. And you got traffic coming out of a gas station, people trying to get out of there. You're going to, you got, you're inviting a problem, and they don't care. They don't care. I called Kroger's corporate office, and they give you the runaround. They don't care. I wouldn't give Krogers any kind of credibility for our community. This is our community, not Kroger's community. Don't let them in. Don't do it. That's all I got to say.
Good evening, council. My name is Ron Hall. I'm the property manager for the center and the owner. And on behalf of questions that have come up from the council, there was an issue as far as trash. We have all the dumpsters there dumped every day. We had a problem with trash because neighboring people were We had a problem with trash because neighboring people were dumping in our facilities. I have proof of that from our dry cleaners. From the traffic study that was done, 34 pages, all the statistics in the world about accidents at the center and so on, and the amount of traffic, given the opportunity to put a gas station versus when the bank and CVS was there, it's a non-issue. Everything that was recommended in the traffic study has been completed, all the recommendations. The owner's committed to maintaining the center. We are committed to— there was an issue as far as drainage. You know, I've talked to Tri-County—the owner of Tri-County Power Rottting. I mean, the city came out and checked all the manholes. We—it was perfectly clean. There was not an issue. We have a meeting set up with Tri-County to go through the center and I have an agreement with them. Anytime there's an issue there, they will come and immediately take care of any issue. We—we ask people who shop at the center to consider the possibility of a gas station. And I have here for you 225 signatures of people who shop at that center at the various stores, not Kroger. I didn't—we didn't solicit anybody in Kroger. These are from the small owners of the various stores there. 225 signatures. You know, when you talk about what you want the location to look like, I mean, the owner's paying taxes on two vacant buildings. And with Rite Aid closing all their stores, the possibility of getting a— a good vendor in to replace the CVS location, you know, would be quite difficult. You know, the leasing agent that was up here earlier is talking to people, but it's a large space. Everything that the city council, the planning commission has requested of the owner, you know, we have done. And I would say—tell you, 225 people who visit the center would like to see the gas station. I know a few people talked about the traffic. I think you have the traffic study.
Your time is up.
My name is Basim Biedoun. I'm the owner of the property.
So we can—Mr. Kroger—
Through the chair, you've given—you'll—after the public hearing, you'll be given an opportunity to answer any questions that the council has. This is a public hearing right now.
Correct.
But I will take your petition and give them to the city clerk.
Okay. We'll give you additional—after there's—after everyone speaks.
Larry Harper, 19624, Raleigh Circle South. As I've listened to the gentleman who's just spoke here, you know, the main issue, like it's stated, congestion. Congestion is catastrophic right now, you know. It's—and space. With implementation of another building to replace other—still talking about space, congestion, that's the main issue here. You know, safety, like I said, for kids and citizens, seniors, as myself, you know, that has issues, health issues that, you know, that's gonna be more problem, you know, stage, you know. So it's considered the—the realistic thing is congestion, safety. Third gas station, not needed now. Consider that and let your hearts and your spirit be aware of the two things that are just safety, congestion, and—I'm against the third—the third gas station.
Tony Martin, 21025 Concord, representing Beacon Square Homeowners Association. There's a lot of talk about the traffic and the congestion and there's talk about the traffic study was done. The traffic study was done for the parking lot where Kroger's is. What needs to be done is the traffic study for Evergreen and 12 Mile because that is very congested. People can't come out of the Kroger parking lot to make a southbound turn on Evergreen because of the traffic congestion. That needs to be fixed. That's something that the council needs to look at for traffic studies when they're requested, is that not only for the lot that's there, but for the public traffic ways for the area where something has to have a traffic study. Residents talk about the number of gas stations there. Well, if you look at Northwestern Highway, Northwestern and Franklin, there's two gas stations there. Less than a quarter mile away, there are three more gas stations. So talking about having two gas stations or three gas stations at one corner is fine and dandy. If you remember, at the corner of 12 Mile and Telegraph, there was Dreams, which is—was a gas station. There's a gas station across the street and on the northwest corner—northeast corner, there's a gas station. So there are coordinates where there were three gas stations in the city. There'll be more on Northwestern when you finish the new one that's being built at Northwestern and Franklin and the one across the street at 12 Mile and Northwestern. So, you know, the number of gas stations is gonna stay. There's over 6 million—600 million cars in the United States. I'm sorry, 300 million cars in the United States and they're not going away anytime soon. So gas will be used. I just want you to know that the traffic study needs to consider the area around because you have a lot of congestion on Greenfield or Evergreen and that needs to be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Marla Thomas and I'm speaking on the Kroger reconditioning of the rezoning of it. And basically, I've frequented that intersection. I've frequented the barn—uh, the barn down the street where it's a nice place that kids can play at. It's not walkable. I cannot turn around. I don't even go to that Kroger specifically because I can't get out. There's only three—when you come out onto Evergreen, everyone is lined up at the street and you have to go across two lanes and there's only spots for two cars before you turn around. You can't get out and you can't go south. There is no turnaround or divided highway on 12 Mile. So now you have to go across all three lanes to try to go westbound on 12 Mile. So without any type of additional funding from the city of Southfield to revitalize that intersection, there's a—there's an enormous amount of constrictions that are being placed at that corner. And as was mentioned earlier, which one of the existing gas stations are you now gonna forfeit and go out of business to have this Kroger gas station?
Hello, my name is Tara Gayor, 24472, Northwestern Highway in Southfield, 48075. Just wanted to comment about the petitioner mentioning that this gas station is only serving the Kroger traffic and it's not going to bring more traffic to the intersection. Just gonna ask a question against that. Why are you then having a price sign right on the corner of the street? You're even putting it on the canopy that is not even offered to the other gas stations? So there is some attractions to traffic, to cars on the road. So this is very technical here. I understand council members, you're here to serve the community and the business people in the city and there's a lot of big concern from the neighbors for this congestion and with the parking lot of the plaza, which is small already, coming in and out from the plaza, as the fellow before me mentioned, coming out on 12 Mile, they have to use the U-turn, sorry, and Evergreen as well. So that is going to create some traffic problem. The hypermarket, as they call it in the gas industry, like Sam's Club and Kroger, for example. Of course, they sell unbranded gas, whatever, they're just any cheap gas to promote their grocery items. So as he mentioned, actually, that is just to help the grocery so we can pay the property taxes. Property taxes will be paid to you no matter how, even from the bank building. Now, the catch here, if—we're dealing with them as a hypermarket, then don't allow them to put prices to the street to avoid such problems. Like Costco and Sam's Club, they don't allow them to just put their prices—if they are serving their members and their customers only. So the fact it is not for the Kroger customers only, it is gonna be a draw factor or items to drag customers into that plaza, which is going to be a bigger problem inside the parking lot for the students even walking after the school or before the school. Finally, with the—anyway, so just let me conclude with that. Thank you for listening and I know that you're serving your community with the professional outcome of these studies. Thank you.
I stay at 20339 North Lockmore Drive. I've been here now for about 21 years and, you know, I thought maybe another gas station might not be so bad, but then I started thinking about the high school is right down the street, two or three blocks. You know, you have a lot of kids that walk home and they're gonna take the shortcut through the parking lot, you know, and it's just a—like a—something waiting to happen because they don't pay attention. They walk through the lot, you got cars coming in and there's not a lot of ways to get off of 12 Mile or Evergreen to exit, you know, because it's always congested. So that gas station is gonna bring a lot more congestion. You got your school buses in the daytime and at night trying to get home. You got just too much congestion and not to mention, the kids will be going to the store. I'm thinking about the litter that they would be, you know, kids, you know, they're gonna drop, you know, candy wrappers and everything. We already have enough—too many issues over at the Kroger's lot, the trash being on the ground, the parking lot being dirty. From what I remember, it's been dirty a lot more than it's been clean. So I'm just—there's a lot of issues there. I don't think it's a good idea because it—we got two gas stations which serves us enough. If you bring that other gas station in, it's just gonna create a lot more problems in the neighborhood. It's already very congested. So that's my thoughts.
You—you'll have a chance afterward, done with the public hearing. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to the conditional rezoning at PCZR24-0002?
Mr. President, good evening. My name is Gerard Mullin, Post Office Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. I'm here tonight to say I am against the petitioner's request and here's why. There is already two, count them, two, uno, dos, two gas stations at this intersection. This is one more than need be. This city has an ordinance against multiple cannabis stores in one location or nearby to each other. This principle should be applied to gas stations, that is, one gas station per intersection. Otherwise, Southfield will start looking like Detroit. What's next on council's agenda? Billboards? This city doesn't need billboards or does it need multiple gas stations at one intersection? The Kroger intersection is already congestive with traffic. A third gas station at this site would add—would add to the congestive traffic. I would like to point out that currently, next to the gas station across the street, that is, across Evergreen Road, there is fire station number three. A third gas station with its added traffic can only have a negative effect on the fire department's response time. Think about it. The Southfield Fire Department currently has an excellent rating. The better the rating, the lower the cost for Southfield residents on their homeowners' insurance. Kroger's gas station could raise every Southfielder's homeowners' insurance rate. Think about this before you vote. Take a page out of Nancy Reagan's book. Just say no. Just say no to Kroger. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Marnita Wooden Lyons. I'm a proud member of the city of Southfield as a resident. I do not want the Kroger gas station. What seems to be evident here today, Kroger has the money to upgrade their Kroger store, but they wanna go ahead and get a gas station. I don't think it's fair to anyone who lives here. We should have quality food that comes from Kroger's. If you go in there any point in time, I guarantee you that those commercials that you see on TV, they are on TV, but it's not in Kroger's. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to the conditional rezoning, PCZR24-0002? All right, seeing no one else, the public hearing is now closed. I'd like to ask the representative from Kroger and if the representative from the shopping center wanted to come up and answer some of those questions.
Through the chair, if I may. If it appeared to be a threat, that certainly wasn't my intention. Kroger's a publicly traded company that has an obligation through Sarbanes-Oxley to make investments that they can prove are viable and will create shareholder value. That's why this gas station and the— and the grocery store are linked. We have 1,500 fuel stations across the enterprise where we understand our customer's behavior and its relation and what a fuel station can do to help the health of a shopping center and leads to improvements. We're a proud resident of Southfield, too. We've—we've spent millions of dollars in the last years to maintain the store, to keep it open and healthy so that we can make the conditions to get a remodel. Blight was brought up. The closed bank isn't exactly the best advertisement for a corner. Something is gonna go there. Our impact from that bank, traffic keeps coming up is an issue. We're talking a de minimis increase in traffic that's not even measurable as far as traffic patterns go. A good portion of our customers are already in the parking lot. Regarding safety, Kroger couldn't be any more concerned about safety than anyone. We listened to the recommendations about crosswalks being added, delineating signage to help manage parking within the Kroger parking lot. All those items were things that were brought up. The traffic study was to say, what is this impact of the fuel station gonna be on the shopping center and what is it gonna contribute to Evergreen? And what is it going to contribute to Evergreen and 12 Mile? That was quantified. It was seven and 50 cars. That is negligible in our traffic study. So something is going to be there. We're proposing to be there so we can have connectivity to the store and promote a helpful redevelopment of the shopping center. We don't threaten anyone with development or quid pro quo arrangements. We're asking, help us be a good neighbor by helping us invest millions of dollars in your community. Two gas stations, you know, I'm a fat guy. Every time you open another pizza parlor, my wife's like, oh, why do we need more pizza? I love choices. We offer choices. Another thing that Kroger offers, it's a Fortune 500 company, is stability within the market. It's a new underground storage tank system. They have state-of-the-art design onboard vapor recovery with cars. Its impact on the environment is null. There's no smells when we load tanks. We extract vapor as product goes into the tanks. No one smells anything. When you discharge gasoline in your car, it's extracted by your car, so there's no scent. We don't have radios on our dispensers to distract people. We were asked to provide pedestrian connectivity, a bench, and to promote walkable parts of the city. We did that on the frontage without any issue. We'd like to connect pedestrians to our shopping center. If you give me a second, there were obviously a lot of very thoughtful comments, and I'd like to put them. We installed crosswalks. We have crosswalks within the shopping center. Bear with me here. Stability in the market, parking pedestrians, we added the crosswalks, publicly traded company. As far as attracting kids from the schools to go to the, it's 198-foot kiosk that they can't enter. The kids are probably far more likely to go to the traditional convenience stores across the street. We don't have any place to go into to buy things. We don't have outdoor sales. So it would either be the Kroger store or some of the small shops that would attract people into the shopping center. It certainly wouldn't be this kiosk. It's smaller than your desk that you're residing on right now. Anyhow, we, too, are proud residents of Southfield, and we're asking for your help to redevelop a portion of the property and provide connectivity to the Kroger grocery store and keep the business healthy and appropriate for reinvestment.
Thank you. Andrew, you wanted to add some additional comments?
Well, a number of people brought up the fact that the traffic study was only conducted within the center, and that is incorrect. It had all the traffic count on 12 Mile and Evergreen. It also listed in the last seven years, six years, I apologize, six years, the number of accidents at that center, one of which was somebody turning the wrong direction on Evergreen. And the other one, one of the other ones was when it snowed, the person slid out in front of traffic. So in six years, there were really only five accidents, which is within the norm. And you talk about safety. Is it safer for the people already in the center to secure gas within the center or to try and negotiate the traffic and go across the street? 225 residents, I believe, of Southfield who visit the center have requested that you vote yes. Oh, one other item. We clean, we sweep, parking lots sweep, the center every day, every day. And we're committed to maintaining the center and want to, you know, be a good neighbor. Anything that has been brought to our attention, we've tried to do and are willing to do.
Thank you. Councilman Hoke?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I want to confirm what you said because one of my questions is that you did do a traffic study on the streets and not just the parking lot.
The traffic study encompassed the traffic on Evergreen and 12 Mile and traffic going in and out of the center. It was a complete traffic study, 34 pages long. It was submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Who did the traffic study?
Collier Engineering. That's how we arrived at what the counts would be in and out of the center. And they observed how traffic worked within the shopping center and how it traversed from Evergreen and 12 Mile, what the stack was, what the stack interval was to get back onto the roadways and come in, and there were negligible delays. And with the additional traffic controls, essentially reaffirming, don't park in front of the store with the yellow crosshatching to prevent that stack that was occurring in front of the store. Those are all recommendations that were born of that study that we made.
Okay, I have some more questions. Mr. Planner, did we, did the fire department, did the chief weigh in on this as far as what he thought? Were there any issues, especially with us covering Lake Village?
Well, it's part of all of our reviews. The fire department and the police department do make recommendations as far as to the site plan and so forth. I don't know if there are anyone still here behind me.
But do you recall, was there any?
There was anything significant. I will say that the planning commission and planning staff did ask for a certified traffic study to be done, which was provided. And I will verify that it was negligible difference from the current bank and drugstore to what this would generate. And also, there were approximately seven accidents in the past six years that were all minor.
You said you do have to check the?
No, I'm verifying that.
Oh, okay.
That the engineering report was done at our request and was provided to us on July 16th, 2024.
Okay. You mentioned some signatures that you passed up here. Two questions relative to those. Are any of them here?
We didn't ask anybody to come, no.
Then, secondly, how many or what percentage were actual Southfield residents? Because you said they were shoppers.
I can't tell you that because we didn't ask their address, but they go to that center. All we asked for was their, they have a complete, and you can see a copy of the actual document, and it just said that we're, that Kroger is proposing a fuel center. Are you in favor? You know, if you are, please sign. And they would put their name and the date.
Well, I'll be honest, that's a little concerning because obviously we would want to know what a resident say, not just anybody that may live 150 miles away, but, okay. My next question is, when we've seen site plans for upcoming gas stations, they all have something with the electronic vehicle charging. Why, was there any thought to having that here? Why not have it here? And it's my concern because I want to make sure that, again, this location isn't always thought, we don't have to give them everything. But I'm not sure if you have the EV charging stations at your other, I know you don't in West Bloomfield, but I'm not sure on 8 Mile. But what did you think about, did you ever think about adding EV charging stations?
Through the chair, we do not have a national contract for EV charging. If we did, it would certainly not be on that parcel. It would be for longer-term parking within the shopping center. So that EV parking would occur in the shopping center, not here. With the explosive atmosphere and the, it's just not something that, we're not going to put EV chargers in something this small. We're taking up a very small window of this property. So we'll keep, we'll keep the EV chargers for future when they arrive in a contract, and they'll be in the shopping center.
Okay. Few more to the owner. Like where Dress Barn used to be and now CVS. What's the possibility of filling those in? I mean, this gas station, there's no promise that that's going to bring businesses to ones that have been empty for some years now. What's your outlook? What do you think? Is there any possibility to?
There are currently, I've been with the company for just over a year, and there are currently six vacant spaces within the center. One that's on Evergreen. There are two over, which was the Dress Barn. One next to, well, Ivan, the suit shop moved next to Kroger and CVS and the bank. I mean, it's, and we've had people that have approached us that not, anybody, I mean, it's very difficult for small owners to raise capital and to invest in a store, especially anything that would involve food. We'd love to have, you know, a couple of small restaurants in there, but nobody's approached us.
To Kroger's, what's your policy on the gas station not being necessarily in the same lot as the grocery store? Because I am familiar with for sure, one, maybe two locations where the gas station is not near the store. It's not far, but it's not near the store either. And did we think about that, maybe?
Well, as we construct new grocery stores, with only one exception, we won't build a new grocery store without a fuel center onsite because it's a convenience to our customers. You accumulate points, you go and get gas. We absolutely do have a few remote fuel stations. But this entire application process since 2017, we started with the site adjacent to Tim Horton's. We're going to raise a portion of the small shops, the bagel shop, and move it over there, and that was resoundingly rejected. It wasn't the right place. We have someplace that is vacant that is contiguous with our parking lot, which fits perfectly into our model to keep our customers in the parking lot so that it's convenient for them. They don't have to traverse the street, they don't have to go across the street. It's right there. And that is about 70% of our enterprise, they're on the site. And that's a much preferred to our customers and for operational issues. I don't want to get into proprietary technology issues, but we will be able, that cash register in the kiosk is a cash register, same as the one that's calculating purchases in the store. It's intrinsically connected to the grocery store, by a board to a room that collects data. As soon as you move offsite, you run into a bunch of costs, management issues, line of sight issues to the grocery store, and how you manage transactions. And it's not the smoothest operation for our customers, which is ultimately who we're looking to satisfy.
Okay, and I think I have two comments, and then I'm going to close on a question that you can answer or not. I was just wondering why we didn't demolish the CVS building with all of this since it's empty and, you know, we keep, you know, adding to the problem. You know, it's kind of like you're dressing up just a section, but not the entire outlet mall, I forget what we call it, the center. But, and you mentioned a lot about your cost, the great work that you do, and I can appreciate all of that, but I believe also the store is very profitable, so we didn't mention that. So, you know, it's, yeah, there's a lot of cost, but I'm sure it's very profitable. And I'll end with this. I'm not saying, well, one other thing. There was a resident who had mentioned Northwestern Highway. We're not talking apples to apples because that's highway. This, it's not the same, so I just wanted to indicate that's not even a thought process for me because it's totally different. But you said that you weren't making any threats, not saying that I thought that that was the case. But if your request fails, will you stay here? If there's no threats, will you stay?
I cannot speak, he would speak better to the lease that's under contract right now.
But you control, or your company, whether you're going to leave.
I control the design of the fuel site and delivering the information.
But have you had those discussions with?
We've talked nothing about moving from this location if we don't get the fuel site. And again, reaffirming we've made no threats. And I will say, you reminded me of a great point that I was remiss in giving you as far as Kroger just being out for money and making money. From 2019 to 2023, Kroger, not Kroger corporate, Kroger this store, donated 127,000 to direct community organizations and $113,000 to nonprofits. That's not a company that is not invested in this community. I've represented fuel for Kroger for 15, 16 years now. I have never, and I was in the petroleum industry before then. Not that my judge of character means anything to anybody, but I've never seen them make decisions without the consent and input from the community. We have gone to study session, first, second reading, study session, first, second reading, and at every step, we've heard what you said. I take prodigious notes every meeting. We go back and we say, how can we address this? Let's make this right. We have addressed every comment that's been made. The traffic, the perception that this is going to generate so much traffic, it's going to be dangerous, that just doesn't prove true in the traffic study. If the fuel station was never approved, something is going to be there and something is going to be adjacent to it. Whatever that may be, it may be far more intense than us. And lastly, our model does not, people grocery shop, 30% of our customers go from the grocery store to the fuel site. People don't grocery shop during rush hour. They're not having the same impact on this site as a traditional. I used to stop at Speedway in the morning to get my coffee. That was on the way to work. That was a lot of traffic, pulling trips off the road. This is not a trip generator in a traditional convenience store sense.
Councilman Hicks?
Yes, good evening. I don't know if you can tell, but I'm a person who enjoys eating. I'm a person who enjoys eating. I don't know if you can tell that by looking. It was a joke. You didn't get it, that's okay. I got your joke, but, but, um, over the past week, you know, I've been a loyal Kroger customer. My name is Charles Hicks. I'm sure if you pull up my membership number, you're going to see that my family of seven frequents the store on 12 Mile frequently. Over my, over the last week, I had the opportunity to go to Hilton Head, so we did a road trip. I stopped at the Krogers in Cincinnati. I got gas and some snacks. I stopped in Kentucky, same thing. And then, over the course of the week, we loaded up in Hilton Head's Krogers. So you all have a very strong footprint of stores throughout the country, and I applaud you for that. One of the asks of council last week was, you know, what is the plan for uplifting the store? One thing that I did notice, and I actually had to pull my wife out the car, you need to come look at this Kroger's. One, you know, we have an electric vehicle at home as well as gas. This Kroger outside of Cincinnati had tons of fuel station as well as electrical. When you go into the store, I'm a technology guy, and there was just so much technology, and there were just so many different options for food. I think because of the council's ask of what is the plan for the store, we would have loved to have heard a comprehensive plan for 12 Mile and Evergreen. I heard you clear that there was investment over the past couple of years. I heard you this evening where you said. I heard you this evening where you said that a remodel will occur over three years, but what does remodel mean? You know, that's, that could be paint. That could be shifting. We need to understand, you know, our faithfulness to Kroger, what's Kroger's faithfulness to our community? You mentioned that you all are part of, you know, the Southfield community, but we're only hearing one side of Kroger, which is the gas side, not the main, the store side and what the plans could be or will be. My, my concern, and I'm a fact person also, F A C T, fact. The facts you gave about your investment to the community, I appreciate that. But to my colleague's point, how much has the store generated in revenue? So I can give you a couple hundred thousand if I'm making several hundred million.
I, I, through, through, through the chair, I, I can't speak to the financial operations.
Right, but my point is, why aren't you bringing those people? Because we've asked for what else is gonna happen. That point should have resonated, and you would have brought in a colleague who can speak on that behalf.
I, I, I will, I will say this, the connectivity between the fuel station and the grocery store remodel is a substantial investment that takes time to build that equity between the store and the fuel station. Those aren't small improvements. The, the, the remodels that have occurred, six fifteen Gilmo, Gil and Eight Mile, five seventy-nine in Monroe Township, they've all been major remodels, not, not insignificant. Even with the limiting factor of the store being small, that would be a far larger impact on that location than, than a larger store. Like I said, I, I think that the footprint, this one was thirty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-six square feet to be exact. So Kroger, in all these meetings, and I've presented at most of these, has never committed publicly, I'm on the public record, committed, they're gonna do an interior remodel as a result of investment. They're spending three million dollars to put this fuel station up to be a better provider for their customers and to build brand equity and cross merchandising that allows for all this future investment. We have to be profitable to stay in business, whether, I, I, and w- w- we're obligated to our shareholders to, to maintain a certain amount of performance. We're, we're, we're investing in the community every day. We pay taxes. It's the most charitable co- company in the country. We've invested three million dollars in the last five years. I, I, I wish I could invest in my house like Kroger has invested in the stores, but that's kind of the, the, it, it's a mortgage that they have to pay for. So it's, it's no different an investment model than that. And this is, you know, you get your return on capital, you, you put in a granite kitchen and you can sell it or perform better because your house has a better value. This creates a growth in the grocery store. People appreciate it. Especially in this economy with gas fluctuating so violently. You know, if you are a frequent customer, you can get up to a dollar off a gallon. That's a significant savings to a family. So i- i- it's, it's, it's not a a dark ask to put the fuel station. There's nothing sinister. It's an, an avenue, it's another category for the grocery store. It offers additional services to our customers. It allows discounts and it builds the strength of the store. I, 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 I've, I've been a party to remodels in the grocery store as a result of the fuel stations being put in. So, that, that I can attest to.
Well, I guess my, my question was, is there an opportunity for Kroger to come back with a comprehensive plan, including the gas station and the remodel? Because using Michigan Avenue in Dearborn as an example, there was a Kroger store on one side, and there's a Kroger on another that you all built. A gas station is not even adjacent to that one. So some of the points that my colleague mentioned, I'm giving you an exact example of where you built a brand new store. I mean, a conversation could be, yeah, you're limited in space in the footprint that you're in to expand. But maybe the conversation should be, should we tear down CVS and the building next, and Bank of, Bank of America? And maybe that's a good footprint for building a new store.
I, way, way above my.
I understand, but that's why I'm asking you to take our comments back, because you take, you took copious notes, to bring that to the others who do have that power or consideration.
Again, I'm the property manager. I'm not the lease negotiator. But I can tell you that the corporate people at Kroger out of Cincinnati have talked with our people, exactly what I do not know, but about extending the lease, which I think is, on the Kroger store, is up in three years. And there's discussion about everything moving forward together for it to be long-term. I don't have the particulars, but I do know that there's discussion and interest on Kroger's part to extend the lease. And I would say, well, I can't say whether or not they'd do improvements, but it makes logical sense to me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Councilman Haynes, did you have?
So you're saying that if you don't get the gas station, that something else would go there and it possibly could be another gas station or something else?
I, through the chair, no, no, I, it's, it's, we're, it's B2 right now. We're asking to conditionally rezone to B3 to allow the gas station so we can have that connectivity. And the other corners, we, we would have continuous B3 zoning to the middle of the street, so it wouldn't be spot rezoning. But what, what we're saying is, as part of the conditions, if you allow a conditional rezoning, we don't want to have that property be anything but a Kroger fuel station. So all those things that occur in, approved in a B3 or in a special use in a B3, we struck lines for them. Don't care, don't want that, don't need that, don't need quick service restaurant with a drive-through, don't need smoke shops, don't need. We just want our fuel station in, in the same parking lot as our grocery store.
I wasn't on the council before, and I can try to go back and remember. When you were turned down before, was it the same location?
No.
Okay, so that location hasn't been turned down three times, two times? Because I heard you say something about it was somewhere else that you all turned out.
It, it was in the same parking lot.
Okay.
It was adjacent to the Tim Hortons. We're gonna raise the bagel shop.
Okay.
And the end cap to do that. And, uh, the, the, it was resoundingly rejected that, that was the wrong spot.
So basically, that was a different plan in a different place. It wasn't the same thing. Because I'm just trying to answer a question, ask a question that was stated, so it was misstated then, that you were rejected three times in that spot or even two times in that spot. I'm just trying to clear that up, so, um, just wanted to make sure of that.
Through the chair, Ms. Haynes. I'll confirm that there was one request on the eastern side of the property next to the Tim Hortons for a fuel station. In my fourteen years, that was the only other time that there was a request. There may have been one prior to that, but only once, and it was in a different location and involved tearing down part of the existing shopping center.
And I do understand a little bit about making money. Places do have to make money in order to survive. I don't think anybody in this room would not want to have a business that didn't make any money. That's just a question. When you're talking about the residents and the questions that they have, I don't know how to put this. The concerns, they're, they're major to the residents. And I know that you said it's not a threat, but the, the fact of the matter is when, that you came with the Greenfield store, when Kroger was at Greenfield, things didn't happen and it closed. So you said it's not a threat, and is it a guarantee? Like, did he say that you will still be there, but you?
I, I will, I will read you exactly the verbiage. If the fuel center is approved, Kroger will commit to remodeling the store within three years. And the landlord will commit to replacing park, parking lot in the same duration.
Because what I heard, this is just with me, if you have something existing, it may not be in the best condition, but if you, I know there's different money for different things. The gas station is different from the store. So you're gonna build a gas station, and with that, which will bring some revenue from the residence, that perhaps is going to be able to be used to help better the entire situation. And then from what I'm hearing with the young lady was saying further, that if you say anybody that's a tenant there will be happy because that means you'll be bringing possibly more people, which is not a bad idea for business, it's not a bad idea. And people that may want to come in there will come because it's bringing people there to that station. So you, you, you're hoping to attract some people as well, not just saying you want to keep the thirty percent of the customers. I mean, I have a small business. I want more than thirty percent of the customers that I have. I would like to have seventy-five percent of the customers, and I understand that you have to do things to attract those customers. So you're not ignoring what the, the residents are saying, but what you're saying from a business standpoint, what is good to help the community possibly and help the businesses surrounding it? And also the residents that come in that area, and some of them may not even live here, but they do shop in that area. I think it's important that we do look at that too, because I don't a- ask where a person comes from with that money, just as long as it's green and real. Just, just a question, a thought. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
Um, I'm, you know, I was, I was here several years ago when the same proposal was there. You know, my, my biggest concern, and this is for the neighborhood and for the citizens and the residents. I am really afraid of a food desert. Uh, the people who are shopping there now, they, they, obviously you have some loyal customers at that location. So I'm, I'm concerned about those individuals who are utilizing that location for their grocery shopping needs. And I'm, I'm really af- afraid of a, of a food desert in this city of Southfield. And, and, I cap that with, from a standpoint that, uh, I hate to say this, but I'm a, I'm a, I, I come out of the business world, I'm more of a nuts and bolts, you know, quantitative guy. And rarely I look at the social side of things. Well, I do look at them obviously, because I watch the news every night. I'm concerned about the food desert a- aspect of, uh, the current individuals who rely on that location for their grocery shopping. So, uh, that, that's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Banks?
Thank you. Few questions, please. If my memory is correct, the last time a gas station request on this property was brought forward, Kroger stayed, Kroger stated at that time that they had partnered with another gas station or two to utilize the fuel card. Is, and I believe that gas station is located on Lozer and Eleven Mile. Is that still true to date?
Kroger cross merchandises with Shell nationwide, but the, the rewards program isn't as generous as it is for Kroger customers at a Kroger fuel station.
So what is the, what is the percentage at a Kroger station versus the Shell station?
I, I can speak to Kroger that it's, it's up to a dollar a gallon discount off, off fuel purchases. Uh, I think Shell is capped at ten cents off per gallon.
Because I do know that the Shell gas station owner in Southfield said he does receive a lot of customers that utilize, I guess, the Kroger fuel card?
Yes.
Okay, that's number one. And I, again, I just want to confirm. Um, we had a resident from Beacon Square Homeowners Association that said the traffic study was not done on the roads Evergreen and Twelve Mile. And to the city planner, you're saying, yes, you have received, not a traffic study. Yes, you've received a traffic study, but does that traffic study include Evergreen Road and Twelve Mile Road in that intersection?
It does, and it's included in your data sheet packet.
Wait, it, I'm saying, it does or doesn't?
It does.
It does, okay.
Yeah, it looks at, um, ITE, the International Transportation Engineers, standards for various types of uses. It looks at peak outer, hour data. Looks at crash reports. It's, it's a comprehensive review that includes both the intersection of Evergreen and Twelve Mile as well as the shopping center itself.
Thank you. And then the price that will be displayed on this particular corner. I know there have been some improvements made, but will it be on the canopy? Or do we know where the sign will be?
Well, I'll, I'll speak to that signage is regulated generally by the building department, and they're allowed one sign per street frontage. So I would imagine that they would be granted signage on the canopy facing Twelve Mile and one facing Evergreen Road. But that is a building department signage ordinance that's outside of our review.
Could you show the picture of the gas station with the canopy, please? So on the green space, I'm assuming that's Twelve Mile and or Evergreen? Will there be a sign there, or is that considered a right of way right there?
They're, they're, they'd be limited to their existing ground sign or pole sign for certain square footage. But on the canopy itself, they would, they would have a certain percentage of that canopy that faces Twelve Mile as well as Evergreen, uh, that they could display their, uh, their logo and so forth. That's all regulated by the building department.
Okay.
So we're looking kind of north east at this perspective, so you can see that they have signage. Now, again, this is just a conceptual. They, they would not be allowed that signage that's facing south, but the signage on the west side of the canopy and the north side of the canopy would be allowed within the limits of the ordinance.
So that, so the limits of the ordinance is on the grass?
No, no, no.
No.
That's on the canopy of the, the gas station.
Okay, you said ground sign.
The ground sign is already limited and capped to whatever square footage that's been provided. So something would have to come off for them to, to go on the ground sign or the pole sign.
Okay, so, I'm sure if I got.
They wouldn't get an additional, they would not get an additional ground sign just for the fuel station.
And I, but I don't see the sign. I'm trying to think. I don't even know if there's a sign on the corner there. Is there a?
There's a property, um, Evergreen, Evergreen Shopping Center, there's three different vendors that are on that corner sign. Octoplasma is one. Attack Source, I think, is another, and there's one that's blank.
So they would have to fit within the limits of whatever that's allowed for the ground sign or pole sign?
Okay. So, a- and this is just regarding the Kroger store. He talked about possibly within three years, the store may be remodeled, and again, we don't know what remodeled means. The existing store in the existing format, I'm embarrassed. I was there this past weekend. I'm not even sure what to say. And I personally feel for the people that shop in that store, there's a lot of, a lot of, a lot of improvements that need to be. of, a lot of improvements that need to be made. My husband and I owned a restaurant for years. Some of the things that I saw in that store would never, never have been allowed in the restaurant. When you walk in, the floors looked like they were replaced, so they were nice, but when, when you went to the back of the store, when you looked down the aisles, I'm trying to be polite, but they were filthy. Inside the cases, there was rust, there was dirt. I mean, if I were to grab some milk, I'm not going to have it dirty on the bottom and take it home. I thought when we discussed this last time, Kroger ownership said they were going to make an investment in that store. When I walked around, I mean, what was the investment? The panel floors when you first walked in? I know some of the vegetable bins and everything had been replaced, but there, none of the freezer containers in the middle were replaced.
The entire refrigeration system at a cost of almost $600,000 is due to be replaced in 2024. So that's, that's part of the 3.2 million investment that I was alluding to. So that's, that's happening as our frozen food doors are being replaced in September at a cost of $300,000. That doesn't, I mean, those are, those are staying business, healthful for the stores, energy conversation, LED lighting, better management for the customers. I mean, I can go through, I mean, in 2018, they invested 1.6 million in the decor in the store, the deli, the bakery, the meat, seafood and dairy, all the cases replaced. I suspect with the advent of the fuel station, that the next remodel will be a far different scope. Incrementally, they've invested a lot of money to keep the store operating. Those, I, I will, I'll take store ops filthy. I will talk to store ops, we can, we can certainly bring those things up, but that-
I mean, I, I have pictures, or we have pictures that I'd be more than happy to share, but, you know, you say you suspect. And then you also said, you know, to maintain the store, to keep it open and healthy, help us to be a good neighbor. The store is not even clean at this point. The floors are dirty, the cases are filthy. I'm, I don't know. Again, I just feel, I feel bad for the people that shop there. This, it is not a Southfield standard store.
I'm happy to, Marvin Baker is the local property manager for Kroger. Anytime I hear from him, immediately take care of whatever it is. We had some issues with parking lot lighting, we took care of it. But based on your comment, I'm happy to meet and try to meet with Marvin once a month to go through the store and would welcome you or any other council member to go through the store with us to make sure that everything is spotlessly clean.
And, I'm sorry, what is your position with that store?
I'm the property manager for the owner.
Okay, so who's the manager of the store?
They have three different managers.
Have you been, have you been inside-
But the property manager for the Kroger area is Marvin Baker. And based on your comment, I'm happy to contact him and, and request that we do an inspection of the interior of that store and everything that you just addressed on a monthly basis.
When was the last time you were in that store?
Last week. I'm there, I'm at the center, you know, generally, two to three times a week, just checking for cleanliness to see if there's any people that are leaving their pallets behind the dumpsters and that sort of thing, you know, just trying to make sure that the center's clean. Everything is, this parking lot's been, there's no potholes in it, all the things addressed in the traffic study were completed, including the signs. The parking lot's been striped, it's been, cracks been filled, the curb was painted all the way around. One of the recommendations was over at Tim Hortons to put up a barricade so people couldn't go from Tim Hortons to, into the center across the field. That's done as well. Everything that was brought up in the traffic study has been completed.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Hoag?
Thank you. Where the Krogers is, where the Krogers is located, and when you go east, are those areas storefronts, are they empty?
Are any of them empty?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, there's one, there's one on the Evergreen side.
So my, I always wonder why we didn't just try to expand Krogers from where they are, let's say, and move them down to where Dress Barn was and all in there. But anyway, I just go back to the idea of the remote gas, and when my colleague mentioned Dearborn, that made me think about it, so they did that renovation there, but the, the gas station wasn't an issue there. This particular location, when did it open? Do you know?
I don't. I don't. I can speak to Dearborn, though, I-
No, no, because my point in asking that was, I was wondering, when did the 8 Mile store in Livonia open?
I'm going to sound like a complete geek. I was the first customer at six o'clock in the morning at that. It was sometime early in spring that it opened.
No, 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 the original one, not the renovated. I was there too.
Oh, 2016.
So if I'm not mistaken, I'm almost positive, we were open first then, and it just, this location here.
I'm talking about the fuel, not the grocery store.
Okay, I'm asking the grocery store.
Oh, goodness gracious, it, that was there for forever and ever. That was, yeah, that was-
This one is decades too, though, right?
Yeah, but I, I was just referring to the fuel station.
No, that's no problem.
Sorry.
Um, I still, I just have some issues, you guys. I mean, I'm trying my best to, to, you know, kind of support you, because, you know, I want to keep you here, I know how important it is, but there's just no guarantee, you know, that the other empty stores in that, in that mall will open, it'll be there. And I just kind of remember this Kroger's, it's on Grant Shit in Roseville, and it's, the gas station is nowhere near the store. I don't even think I can see the store, and I go by it often, because I go to Metro Beach to read every weekend, and I can't see the store. And so I'm just wondering, can we go back to the drawing board to see if we can consider, yeah, like a comprehensive study, as my colleague said, but think about that and/or go back to the Greenfield location site and, because that building is still open, right? I mean, vacant. And we all want to support Krogers. That's not the issue. However, we have always said, and I was honest with you last week, that I just flat out said it, I'm concerned that when we see black and brown customers, do we care how they stores look? And I'm not saying that's the case, but sometimes that's what we feel like, because we always got to show first, we always got to put up first versus somebody show a commitment to us. And, because like I said, we know businesses that do their business here in Southfield, they're very profitable, just about everybody. And so, anyway, I'm just, that's just my thought, you guys.
I can tell you that, you know, having visited with most of the store owners in the plaza, every person that I talked to, and I think there's only two that I didn't speak to, they would love to see the gas station there. I mean, if the gas station goes in, it, it helps the grocery store-
But they're, they're not residents.
And it helps, it helps the center to be stronger.
I forgot to say this, I am disappointed that, as the property manager, you didn't know that that store was that bad, because if you were doing monthly or whatever, we shouldn't have to, this shouldn't be a surprise to say, that store is not up to par.
Well, in the past, in the past, my job was not to try to manage the store, to do anything to keep it nicer or cleaner or upgrade.
And sometimes you just have bad management. Get them out of there.
And-
They don't want to do what's right and give us all the same quality that we get in the suburbs. Don't, we shouldn't settle. It's like we're settling on, it's just what it feels like.
This meeting brings focus to that store, and, and I'm committed to get Marvin Baker in there once a month to go through it, and would invite any of you to come with us and to make sure that, that the store is maintained to Kroger standard.
Southfield standard.
If I may, we've proffered a path forward to get a remodel of the store.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I said, we've, we've proffered a path forward with the combination of the fuel station to help the store so we can reinvest and do a major remodel within three years. In 15 years of doing this, I've never been able to say that, not once.
You've never been what?
I've never been able to say, we will perform an interior remodel within a finite period of time if the fuel station is allowed to be constructed. That is a paradigm shift. I've been to hundreds of public meetings, this is my 518th public hearing, okay? I've done a lot of these. I've never said that before, not once. So I, I, I'm saying, this is a perfect development for, it's an existing vacant bank that we're going to knock down. We're going to pay to remediate the asbestos, we're going to take it out, we're going to put a much smaller footprint that isn't intense, is not, is going to be a connection to our existing grocery store, and it's going to promote healthfulness. The customers, historically, we've not torn any fuel stations down because they failed and the store didn't do better.
I promise my last comment. So the gas station's going to look great, but the store is going to be three years behind. So it's like you renovating just a part of your house, and you love that room, the new room that you got, but eventually, the other parts of the house get old, and it doesn't, it's mismatch.
Councilman, you are correct. There has been incremental improvements to the tune of $3.2 million. That is not an insignificant investment in that store to maintain it and to keep it operating, and we're willing to spend $3 million more to raise a closed bank and install a fuel station. I don't, that's a large investment in the community. I don't, I understand that we want the grocery, but there's incremental changes that occur across the enterprise that I've witnessed, Livonia being the number one. I did the fuel station, Dearborn, I did that fuel station. We didn't have enough room to put it in the other parking lot, and that parcel next to Bill Napp's became available. It's an aircraft carrier canopy, it's unlike anything else in Michigan. But if Kroger had its choice, this is a perfect relationship for the grocery store.
You said Dearborn didn't fit. That looked bigger than ours.
It is.
So if ours fit, why didn't theirs fit?
It didn't fit in the parking lot, it could have been a deed restriction, whatever it was, we were not allowed to put it in that parcel in front of the Kroger store. So we had to put it remote, and it was rooftop, there's satellites on it.
Did you get your question answered? Did you get your question answered?
I mean, but I'm good.
Okay.
Yep.
Councilman Hoag, do you have any more questions, or?
No, I'm good.
All right.
But I didn't hear the answer to her question, though. Maybe, maybe I missed it. One of the things that my colleague had asked was, did you want to take an opportunity to regroup with the other side of Krogers with the notes that you've gotten this evening? Should we table this and have you come back after you've had a conversation with your peers?
There are Kroger representatives back here.
Okay.
Okay, we, I was, delivered this package today, that this is how the investment is proffered. And again, I'm going to say, it's very unusual that they say, we will guarantee within three years. So that means something has to happen way in advance of three years, because you don't plan a grocery store inside of a month. So it's going to be not concurrent, but sequential to the fuel station. If you'd like to have them come up and ask specific questions about-
My ask is, why haven't they come up? Why are they leaving you out here when we've asked these questions?
You know what, I, because the script and, and the story is, is the same. These are the parameters that we were given. I make all the presentations, people get nervous, I still get dry mouth. I perpetually drink water when I get up here. But we can bring them up, but I think that after all the conversations, the deal is the same. They're, they're not going to, they're not going to say, we're going to raise the small shops and we're going to expand the store. What we have now is the lease for the 35,000 square feet, we've invested millions, we're going to be investing more into that store to keep it operating, which tells me that Kroger's invested in the property and they're going to spend three, why would they spend $3 million to secure a property, raise a bank and build a gas station if they didn't expect to be here for a while? That's, that would, they're, they're not foolish.
You want me to answer that?
Oh, I, you know-
Because they're used to just coming in here demanding it, and we're asking them to work, but, but I'm shocked that they don't want to come up here and talk to us, because we didn't know they were back there. But you feel it's not necessary.
We'll ask them to come up, there's a couple more questions up here, then we can have them come up.
Oh, sorry.
Councilman Cruz?
I don't, you know, coming behind Coretta, like Barack said, I'd be crazy to come by after her and talk, but as well as all my other colleagues, I think I'm not going to be labor to point any, much further. I do, I do know that, I can say that I did manage Farmer Jack in my younger years here in Southfield, the largest one in the state of Michigan at the time, up there on 12 Mile Southfield. And I know what a store is supposed to look like. And I say, again, we're talking about two different things. You're talking about a gas station, but we're talking about the cleanliness and the type of food and the type of opportunities that Kroger could do. And I'm sorry if we got a different definition of quid pro quo, but that's exactly what it sounded like to me coming from you guys. It's like, we only going to do this if this happens and that, no. And, you know, I'm like, I agree with Mr. Brightwell as well. I'm afraid of a food desert too, but you're not going to feed me anything. I don't want just, just the first, the scraps you got leftover from all the store, other stores, is what it seems like. And again, to Coretta's point too, Ms. Hoag, what was the other point I was going to make? I can't, can't call it right now. Oh, it does seem like in the black and brown community, so that, that takes place more often, that I can just go up the street, see. I don't even go to Kroger no more. I couldn't stand walking through that place. First of all, it was out of stock of a lot of things, the produce was not fresh most of the time, and that, whatever investment, you want to call it a remodeling or whatnot, that was nothing. That was just smoke and mirrors. I know what it's supposed to look like. That was smoke and mirrors, I knew as soon as I walked in there. So again, I think we ought to table this, let you guys regroup for real, and get the right people up here, others that are connected to the store have, as well as yourself, sir, on the gas side, and have a comprehensive conversation and see if we can all come together and find some terms to make this work. So that's all I have to say, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
I, am I thrilled about the prospect of another set of fuel tanks or rather the more gas pumps at Evergreen and 12 Mile? No, I'm not. No, I'm not. However, uh, sometimes you have to give to get. And I'm also concerned when I look at what we got, when, after a lot of negotiation with Kroger about five years ago on Greenfield and Providence Drive. The landlord there bent over backwards to reduce the, um, the, the annual rent. Seems to me over the period of the contract, he reduced it by a million dollars. We ended up, um, they ended up moving anyhow to Oak Park. The Southfield store wasn't particularly clean. The Oak Park store, been in there, stuff's on the floor. Uh, I would agree with Councilman Hicks. I am disappointed tonight that Kroger did not come in and say specifically what their plans are to improve this store. I was in, in Kroger on Friday afternoon. The floors are filthy. They are scuffed, they're, you can just see the dirt, uh, they're white floors. When you walk in the store, the mat has got litter all over, the first thing you walk into the store, there's litter everywhere. And then the shelves, or the, the cases, the freezers, the refrigerators. I can't believe the amount of spots on them, enamel apparently missing or whatever, the coating. I mean, you look in the, the shelves and you see all these blotches in the display cases. That's not a Southfield standard. Our people deserve better than that. The store is not clean. Just plain, plain simple, there are, most of the store has white floors. Yes, they're shiny, but they're dirty. And, and the display cases, honestly, I found a bunch of them disgusting. Not the produce in them, but the, the condition of them. So, I, I really wanted to hear, um, what, specifically what Kroger plans to do to, to give Southfield residents a better store. I also will say that I could support, um, the, the additional gas pumps there because I know a lot of Kroger shoppers, including my sister, swears by it. She loves that dollar offer gas. But I, I want to see something in return as far as what Kroger plans to do in that store. Just telling me, um, three years, I, I don't think that's good enough. I want to hear specifics. And then I'll go back to Clock Tower. So, when Kroger, Kroger left there, and I was involved in those negotiations, when, when Kroger left, then what happened? Bing, 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 a whole number of other people. The anchor was gone. That was the tra, Kroger was the traffic generator to that, that strip center, Clock Tower. We lost the CVS there as well. There aren't, there just aren't strong businesses there anymore. It's, uh, uh, I don't like vacant, um, stores. I don't like vacant buildings. I, I, um, and that's what I'm afraid will happen. History will repeat itself at 12 and Evergreen. This city has four grocery stores. Meyer, Kroger, Foodland, Imperial Market. I mean, I'm talking about major stores and, oh, the Grove on, on Greenfield. We're a city of 77,000 people. We should have, and part of us dollar stores have created food deserts. We, you know, I'm very torn on this issue, but I could support the, certainly support the gas if I knew that Kroger was going to make a better commitment and a cleaner, more modern store. Property manager, I urge you to go through there and look at the display cases.
I'll bring the Kroger manager with me. The regional manager. And I've been in property management for, since I was in college, I'm not a young kid. Worked for two of the largest real estate companies in the apartment industry in the country. Worked for owners out of Farmington Hills who built high-end product. And cleanliness and maintaining the product, there's five Ps in the business, that's number one. And I will tell you that I'll commit to you. It won't be a major capital improvement, but we can get it clean within a month, inside of a month. Cleanliness is next to godliness.
Well-
And I'm, 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 I'm sorry to hear the comment.
Again, you walk in the store and you see dirty floors.
I'll get involved.
And then the display cases, yeehaw.
I'll get involved and I invite you to come through in a month or so.
All right. So, I don't want to see any more vacancies at Evergreen Plaza. And I know there are constituents here that support Kroger and one of the reasons is the, the gas points. And a dollar off a gallon of gas is pretty significant. And I believe if you put the, the pumps there, that you'll probably see an uptake in business at that Kroger. But then Kroger's got to do something about the store. All right, I, I think I made my point.
Councilwoman Ains? Oh, yes.
If I may, Mr. Mayor and City Council, talking about no vacancies, I wasn't going to share this today, but we got this on Thursday from a Fortune 200 company that I represent throughout the state of Michigan. Napa Auto Parts, Genuine Auto Parts. It's a proposal for a lease at the CVS building, based on the fact that this city council meeting was happening today and our hope that things would go favorably. And one of the best things about this is they're an extremely stable company. I mean, they, they are, you know, across 21 countries and, and they, they've been looking at this for a year. And Thursday, they just, they decided to send the leasing proposal. I'm not saying that they will or won't come depending on this. I'm not saying that at all. I just want you to know, you know, we, we are, we are really trying to identify uses that we can have at this plaza to conform with the restrictions of the grocery, grocery, and not put anybody out of business. We don't want to take anybody, you know, we don't want to do Dollar Tree also anyway because there's a dollar store there that's locally owned. So, we're trying, and, and also the parking requirement is very minimal. Unlike CVS, you've got about five maximum employees at, that will work the Napa store if and when it comes. And, and then they, they average about five customers because most of their business is not retail, but they do have a retail component. So, I just want to put that out there and, and again, it was kind of, kind of a hail mary. I can't, I can kind of pass it around, I can't give it to you unfortunately because it is confidential and now everybody's going to hear it in the notes. But anyway, you know, and then also to speak to the remodel, you know, when we put a new roof or a new furnace or a new hot water heater in our house, nobody walks in and goes, "Oh, you spent $70,000 on a new roof, it looks awesome." Or, you know, "I love your new water heater," you know, but unfortunately, you know, you spent that money and it's not very obvious that you spent it to the layman, but you know you spent it and, and it was necessary to, you know, continue improving the store. And, and I would only hope that as they, you know, continue to be a prominent member of the Southfield community, they will do this store and then maybe they'll consider coming to 14 Mile and M5 because that store looks exactly like this one. So, you could come on over there and, and I'm telling you, it was an old Hiller that they remodeled and I think the only reason they're keeping it there is because of the location doesn't have a fuel center, but.
I, I just want to add that I've had conversations with the owner of the mall, Mr. Benno, who's in the audience tonight. I think he's done a great job at keeping the property up. The parking lot is good, the investigation about drainage was done. He redid the roof, the panels, the green panels.
Seventy percent of it.
Yeah. So, my issue is not with the center itself. I think we have a good owner. It's, it's really with the anchor. I don't want to lose the anchor and if it takes the, the gas pumps, I'm fine with that. I don't want to lose more businesses there. I don't want another Clock Tower. And I know that there are people that really are very loyal to Kroger because of the gas. So, I just want to make that clear, but I am disappointed with how the store looks.
Councilman Ains?
Okay. Bear with me for a moment. What's, what I see happening here is, is like a relationship. I'll give a couple comparisons. Let's say you're in a relationship, a guy and a girl, and the guy does some things that aren't good. It's sort of like in the dollhouse, if you will. So, he tries to do what he can to fix that and he say, "Look, I bought you some flowers." She walks in the house, she said, "But the house is dirty. I appreciate the flowers, but I asked you to clean the house and you got me flowers." Okay. And you look at this house and you're saying, "Okay, I've asked you over and over to do the same thing and you still haven't done what I asked you to do." So, for a woman, that's like, and maybe for somebody else, it's like, well, I, I can't trust you if I ask you to do the same thing, you're telling me, "I'm promising you this and you're going to give me this and you haven't done that." So, then I'm not listening to you because I feel like you're not listening to me. So, that relationship goes sour because there, there's been some distrust. And I sort of see that with the residents here. Every letter that I read was talking about, "It's not clean, it's not clean, it's not clean." When I wasn't on the council, I remember when you all came about something else, I wrote a statement and somebody wrote back and said, "We're going to take care of that." Again, that relationship, "I'm going to take care of it, honey." So, there's a distrust and a disconnect. So, what they're saying is, "Oh, you want to go over here and do this for me, but you haven't done this." And so, I think that's what the problem is. Not that you can't do it, we know that you're capable of doing it, but you haven't taken care of what you said you were going to do. So, if you haven't taken care of that, how can I trust you to take care of anything else? And then let's go a different way in a relationship. I have kids, lots of kids, different personalities. Some of them require a little bit more attention than the others. Some of them are very demanding. That's just like the store. Some stores, you don't have to clean up that much because the residents are different or the, whatever, the situation is different. This store is different. You might need to have a person just to clean, just to check on it. And then we're going to go to the mama clean. In our culture, we have what's called mama clean. Some people might know what that is. If your mom tells you to clean the room, you say, "Yeah, I cleaned it." And mama comes in and says, "No, that's, that's not mama clean. Mama gets in and mama cleans." And it might take mama more than a month because you really don't know what clean is. So, you're talking, "I got a roof, I don't shop on the roof. I'm in the building and I can point out this and that, I can do the glove test and, you know, some mamas clean with toothbrushes and on the floor and they learn." And you're looking at this and you're like, "I don't want to eat out of here." You don't want to eat anybody's food, where's that? I'm just telling you from a cultural standpoint. If it's nasty, they don't want to come in. So, these are the things. And when you're looking at that, I appreciate your commitment to the city. I remember when I asked Kroger for things, I have never been turned down for any donation from Kroger. I've never been turned down. That's a big deal, that's a big deal. Because some places, "Oh, you got to come six months, you got to do this and all that." So, that's great. But when you're looking at these things, you have to understand what's important to the community. We appreciate the fact that you want to come to us and say, "Oh, you come in and you look and see and you check and see." How about getting an advisory council of the people that's in the neighborhood? They can tell you. I heard a guy say, "Who shops at Kroger anyway?" It was a guy in my church. And I was like, "Oh, wow, I shop at Kroger." That's what he said. I'm just telling you. So, maybe an advisory council, getting people to say, maybe, I'm not saying your standard isn't clean, but guys are a little different sometimes, but just maybe get some people to say, "Hey, buy into the community." So-and-so in this neighborhood association, you come in and say, "What do you think now?" And they're not hearing. Like I said, again, I don't care how much you paid for the roses, you know, I don't care, but I don't see anything done. And, and these are the things that matter to people. You say, "Well, I spent $3 million." I don't see it. You know, they're, they're saying, "Look, this rug's still dirty, you know, I spent $3 million on these roses, but it's still dirty." So, those, you know, kind of listen to that. You might need to hear a little bit more about that. And I think when you kind of give here to that part of saying, "Okay, we might drop the ball in this, let's come back and hear this," then we will be more willing. Me personally, I would not go to a Kroger that's somewhere down the line. Let me tell you what I do. I do like he does when he goes out of town. If I'm going to get gas, I'm going to get food, I'm going to get grocery. I want it convenient, you know, but also want to make it safe. You want to make it feel good, that people understand. Some people don't understand that the kid's not going to go across the gas station. Make them see how that's going to work. They're, they're not seeing it from the business side of what you're seeing. So, you have to kind of come down and to make them understand and the community has to buy into the fact that we have a responsibility to also keep things clean and to build a standard. If you see something's not right, that the young man said, "The light's not working and the button's wrong," say something. Go to someone. And don't fire Cory over there before you get to him and talk about things because he, I had a situation where a guy was in the parking lot going to everybody, asking for money. And he handled that situation very well. But sometimes he might miss some things because he's got this to do and that to do. So, you may just need to take that little kid and give it a little bit more TLC than the kid in West Bloomville because you need to clean it up. And I think that people will be more willing to hear what you have to say if you listen to what they're saying about this store first.
Mr. President?
Is there anyone else from council who had a comment or? You were going to make a motion. So, before Councilman Cruz, I don't want to belabor the point. I agree with my colleagues, the, the, I got calls from residents who are for the gas station, I got calls from residents who are against the gas station. You know, the mayor mentioned that having three gas stations on one intersection is a bit much, but I do know that there are people who swear by Kroger gas because they get the points, they save the money. Could something better come into this parcel? Could be, but we don't know. We have to take what's in front of us. You know, there's, again, I don't want to belabor everything that everyone has said, but you know, there's, there's cases to be made either way, for or against. I think a lot of what we're saying is, we're not necessarily against the, the gas station, but how do we know that the gas station will live up to its reputation if the store itself has had issues, whether it's cleanliness, the food quality, different things like that? I, I was also shocked, like my colleagues, that we do have representatives from Kroger in the audience. It would have been helpful to hear from them. I know that you are speaking directly to the, to the fuel station, but to hear about the store itself would have been very helpful. I don't know, I will, I'll turn to my colleagues because, you know, we have been talking at this for a while. We do have a lot of residents who I'm sure as well would be interested to hear from Kroger, the store, about what was going, what's going to be done. I, I don't know if we wanted to have them talk now or bring them back at another meeting when it's earlier in the evening and, you know, we're fresh, but I will leave it up to, up to my colleagues if they want to hear from Kroger now or at another, at another meeting.
I think it would be fair to the residents if we had it another time because, you know, they would like to have some buy-in, I'm sure, and it's late. That's my opinion. That's my opinion.
All right. Well, Mr. Councilman Cruz.
Yep. Mr. President, I'd like to move that we table this topic to a date uncertain and ask that the Kroger organization not only bring the mobile or gas issue, but also a representative that can speak to the store as well, so that we can answer some of these questions that have come up today.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, that we postpone a vote on this item to a date uncertain after having a meeting with representatives from Kroger regarding both the fuel and the store itself at this location. Mr. Crowde, is there?
I would just ask that you consider postponing to a date certain. Pick October, pick a date, so that the audience and we all can work towards coming back at a particular time. If you postpone to a date uncertain, we're going to have to re-advertise, republicize everything. And maybe September is too soon. Maybe the October meeting dates would work for them to respond. That's all I'm asking you to consider. But either way, we'll make it work in the future.
The last one.
I don't have a problem with having the date certain in that motion, looking at September, I mean, October 28th.
I still support.
Okay. So, we have an amended motion from Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, that we postpone a vote to a date certain of October 28th, which should give us enough time to hear from the representatives. Now, before we vote on this motion, I want to make sure, are we proposing to have Kroger representatives at the meeting of the 28th?
Yes.
That's what we're asking for, correct? Okay.
Yeah.
So, I just want to make sure that the residents who came understand what we're going to do. So, we'll vote, and then I'll explain it again. So, we have a current motion by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to postpone a vote to October 28th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Through the chair.
One thing I want to say.
So, give me one minute, please.
Yeah. I would ask that you also postpone items B and C to the same date.
Okay. So, but, Mr. Crowde, does that mean, so you want us not to do the public hearing this evening? We're just going to postpone the public hearing?
No, because until there's resolution on the conditional zoning, the special land use and the site plan could be mewed. So, they need to be postponed as well.
So, that's fine, and we do not need a vote for that. Do we?
Yes.
Okay. So, I just wanted to explain for the audience, because we do have residents who came out and have spent a good three and a half hours with us this evening. We are going to postpone any further discussion of the Kroger fuel station until we can hear from the Kroger representatives about the actual store, in which will accompany this proposed fuel station to October 28th meeting. So, that gives us time to schedule that meeting, make sure they can show up to the 28th, and we will then, hopefully, vote on the Kroger item on October 28th. So, I just want to make sure that the residents who came out this evening understand what we're doing.
And then, if I could, through the chair.
Yes.
If you postpone the special land use, we will hold that public hearing on the 28th, depending on how you act on this item.
Okay. And the site plan as well for the.
As well.
Okay. Counsel?
Sure. I got to make a second motion, though, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like, Mr. President, I'd also like to move that we table items B and C to October 28th, again, requesting the presence of not only a representative on the gas station, but as well as representatives that can speak for the grocery store itself.
Support.
All right. We have a motion by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to postpone PSLU 24-0009 and PSP 24-0005, the special use request for Kroger to construct and operate a gas station, and the site plan review to construct and operate a gas station to a date certain of October 28th. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And, sir, you had a?
I just want to make one point to the city council. As an owner, the last two and a half years, I've been dealing with 20,000 square feet of vacancy in there. And I've tried everything. I complied with everything the planning department or the city or the nest to do, and I'll do them. This means a lot to the future of the center, the Kroger gas station and the store.
And I don't think we have a problem necessarily with the shopping center itself, but one of the tenants, we have problems with how they're representing the inside of their store.
I hear you. I hear you very well.
And so, we want to hear from them directly of how they're going to clean up the store and provide what the residents of Southfield want and to that Southfield standard.
I would relay that, Mr. Definitely, to the Kroger people.
Okay. Can you give us your name, sir? Can you give us your name?
Basim Beno.
Oh, Basim.
And I'm the owner of the property. Majority of the owner of property.
I'm not understanding. Okay. We got it. Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah. What, I want to find out, which departments from Kroger did we did not hear from tonight? Who was represented? Who was here?
He was only here for?
I know him, the fuel guy. He said, "I want to know who was here that we did not hear from."
I don't think, at this point, it doesn't matter because there may be different representatives who come up.
Well.
At an October 28th meeting.
Well, I want to know why they're here, why we did not hear from them. I know just about few, but who was here that we did not hear from?
Well, to me, Councilman Brightwell, they didn't want to come up, so.
I can ask the question.
But we've asked them to come up, and they failed to. So, I think at this point, we just wait till October 28th.
Well, please note comments from the audience.
We asked them to come up?
We did.
Yeah.
And they will be, they or different representatives will be back on October 28th.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. So, the next is, we have a public hearing for PZR 24-0006. This is a rezoning request of Maximilian Neuser to rezone two parcels at 21246 Eight and a Half Mile Road. Mr. Crowde?
Thank you. PZR 24-0003, address is 21246 Eight and a Half Mile Road and 21251 Midway. Parcels listed above. Existing zoning is R1 single-family. Proposed zoning is RT attached single-family. And rezoning two parcels and a part of a third from R1 to RT attached single-family, as indicated here. Current zoning, future land uses, moderate density, single-family. The site is heavily wooded. There is an existing garage building that's been demolished on the site, and one of the parcels is vacant. These are deep lots. And all we're doing tonight is considering the merits of rezoning from R1 to RT, so that the owner has the ability to build two duplex units on the site. If the rezoning is passed, he will have to come back to council for site plan approval, and we'll have more specifics on the proposed duplexes. But tonight is just a rezoning request for the consideration of going from R1 zoning to RT to give the property owner the ability to build within the RT two duplex side-by-side units. With that, I'd like to ask the petitioner to come up and add anything before we go to a public hearing.
Max Neuser residing at 21300 Wallace Drive here in Southfield. And I'm obviously the owner, requesting for a rezoning of this land. And as already alluded to, we're just looking for the rezoning go-ahead for now. Primary reason being that Southfield has a very high occupancy rate, something about 98% is what I was told by my real estate agent, and the 1% being in transition. So, there's close to no housing stock available in Southfield. So, we're proposing to build a total of four units as opposed to the two that are currently allowed, to help remediate the available housing stock and provide more to make it more affordable to purchase within Southfield.
We'll have a public hearing and go from there. So, if you want to have a seat?
So, before we proceed with the public hearing, I only have one question. There was the slide with the redoing of the neighborhood to moderate density. Could we go back to that real quick? Yes. So, the only question that I have is if the city could articulate what the future of this neighborhood is to look like, seeing as how the entire thing is slated for redevelopment to moderate density? Just trying to understand what the intent is from the city for the entire redevelopment of this neighborhood? That might help some of the residents understand what the city's plan is moving forward.
Well, through the chair, that's a general future land use category. We have identified the potential for infill housing within some of our older, single-family lots. This is similar to the approach that we took with the Habitat for Humanity duplexes. I've mentioned before that we have an aging population. We need to provide different types of housing stock, whether they be attached units all the way up to medium density, the missing middle housing, to conversions of office to residential, to provide different price points, to get entry-level homeownership as well as entry-level rental, to aspire to family-forming ages who then could buy some of the larger lot, single-family homes. We've seen a long-term trend where especially younger generation don't want to have a mortgage to be tied down or to have a lot of maintenance or requirements. We have a larger, we have a large number of larger, older rental units, as well as larger, single-family lots that are not marketable to the newer, younger generation. So, this is a general land use category where we look at opportunities to integrate with single-family, traditional, single-family district to allow for the two-to-four unit. That's that medium-density, single-family. So, that's a general land use category that we've identified, especially in the southern part of the city where we have the older, higher-density, single-family lots.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now have a public hearing for PZR 24-0006, the rezoning request to rezone two parcels at 21246 Eight and a Half Mile Road. Each speaker will have three minutes. Please give your name and address for the record.
My name is Jennifer Rumbly. I reside at 21228 Eight and a Half Mile Road. This is my husband, Mark. We would be right next to the two duplex, right next door. I'm 100% opposed to have so many families come and reside next to me. We left another part of Southfield, we were in condo, and we left for the sole purpose of having a little more elbow room. And then, three years later, we hear that there's planned to build.
Two duplexes.
Two duplexes, as opposed to two families, when there was only one family there before. I'm just not willing to make that adjustment. So, it is what it is. But I feel that it's a family neighborhood, and I solely feel this to line his pockets. I understand business, but it's a family neighborhood. The whole appeal of that area is single families. How to put four families in that area, it would add crowding. There's not a walking, there's no place to walk. So, where are we going to park? The plans that he's shown at the zoning, they were just this fantastical, generic renditions of what could be. But what I do know is that it's going to be crowded, which is what I moved from. Could have stayed at my condominium off of 10 Mile, which was paid outright, and I'm going backwards. All I hear, all I, when I hear two duplexes, is four families.
Affordable.
Affordable families, whatever that entails, and it's crowded. It's going to take away from what I plan to retire on to. It's totally demolishing that. I don't want it. And that's not what the area is for. There's plenty of apartment buildings around, plenty of apartment buildings around. We don't need one right next door. Or I could have stayed where I was prior. So, I'm totally 100% against it. Housman, would you have anything?
Yeah, I agree, against it. That wasn't our dream.
That's not our dream. We retire in 10 years, and we're not looking forward to, you know, a very crowded place. This is not what we're looking forward to.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening to all. I know it's been a long evening for everyone. My name is Brian Kelly. I live at 21227 Eight and a Half Mile Road. I am against this proposed rezoning. I can only imagine what four rental units would do to my property value. I'm more concerned not only for my value, but for the longstanding residents that have been in that area for decades now. And what, if he puts a house on each one of those properties and they turn into rental units, I would have to live with that because that's what it's zoned as. But to put four units and just let somebody just come in and just hijack my property value, that I've worked hard to maintain my property, to keep it up, to allow someone to, because can anyone here tell me what four rental units is going to do to my property value? That's where we are right now. That's my main concern. The admiration that he may have to want to build housing, I commend him for that. But I also realize that every idea is not a good idea. And sometimes, things just don't fit. If it don't fit, don't put the puzzle together. I saw that, say, "Thank you."
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, council. Mr. Mayor. My name is Peter Eckert. I reside at 21217 Eight and a Half Mile Road. I was very surprised to hear of the plans that moving forward. I mean, I understand that we want to attract, you know, young families, but to rental units, you know, the duplexes, who's going to move into a duplex? That's all I got to say. I don't think that's, is that the best Southfield has to offer? Moving forward, I'd like to say that, you know, I think this idea is not a good one because the lot, first of all, the lot is too small. He requested some 90 feet from the owner behind him, you know? So, that's the reason why we're here. The lot is, you know, the lot is too small, you know? And even, and the request is just a pledge, you know, that he's going to give this land to Mr. Maximilian. And to me, it's only to subvert this system. It's, the land is still going to be what it is, and it's going to be too small to squeeze four units into this property. And, you know, first of all, I know that he doesn't have to submit a plan, but how can we actually make a good decision on, without specifics? You know what I'm saying? No plan has been. No, no plan has been submitted. I understand that, but no, no specifics, specifics at all. Right now, it's just a, an idea, you know? An, an, an idea that's going to affect the block, a lot of residents. You know, the, the, the neighborhood was planned, you know, the, the idea is for, what I, what I, what I'm, what I think it is, is two duplexes in a neighborhood that was planned and designed for single-family homes. We got enough rental units, enough group homes, and enough vacancies on that, on that street already. And our block is already being, being brought down by all these. Once again, you know, Habitat for Humanity, you know, under different circumstances, they were allowed to build those duplexes. You know, they're a nonprofit organization, you know, so they make sure that they, they get the right people in those houses. And even they had problems, you know, of, you know, occupying those, you know, those duplexes. You know, so, you know, and, and as a result of that, you know, it's, it's attracted investors like Mr. Maximilian to do duplexes. And I'm sure this is not the end of it. You know, I, I, this shouldn't, that shouldn't be a precedent, what Habitat for Humanity did. It's not working. Those, those houses look horrible. They look like projects, and it'll only bring our values down. Man, you know, the congestion and the value decrease of rentals, the destruction of nature is not what Southfield needs.
Your time is up.
Not our best.
I'm sorry.
Hear the voices of the residents on Eight and a Half. Let's say yes to some, to some homes that will bring, you know, value to the neighborhood.
Your time is up.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
My name is Janet Moody, and I live at 21256 Eight and a Half Mile Road. I moved there in nineteen seventy-six. We moved to that neighborhood because we love the large lots and the tree canopy and liked having the space and the greenery around us. It was a quiet neighborhood. We had good neighbors, and for all of these years, that has continued to be true. We have continued on that block, unlike some of the other blocks around us. Our block has continued to be relatively stable. I drive down the street, and I see people putting in new driveways. I see new siding going on. I see people improving their roofs and the look of their property. The addition of duplexes will not be in keeping with the, the single-family neighborhood. The, as has been said before, the size of the duplexes will, will really stretch that lot, and all we will see will be housing. There will be four driveways, which will take up most of the front of the property, so you're not going to see the green. Already, if you were looking at an aerial view, you will see that you will not see as large a tree canopy because already many trees have been taken down, and more will have to be taken down to accommodate that, those buildings. So we'll be losing tree canopy. I also have some concern about the ninety-one feet on Midway. Who will be responsible for maintaining that property? The property will not, as we understand it, will not be used for the duplexes, but is only there because of the requirement for having an acre of land. So I have concern about who will be maintaining that land. I'm concerned about the additional number of cars that will be in and out of that property. With four duplexes, a minimum of, even if we had just one car for each, you're going to be, have four cars. Many households have two cars. We're talking about the possibility of eight cars in and out of a relatively small space. So those are some of my concerns. I obviously oppose the rezoning of the property. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Kimberly Bright. I live at 21237 Eight and a Half Mile Road, directly across the street from Mr. Maximilian's proposed duplexes. And I'm concerned, as previously stated by my neighbors, about, first of all, the circumventing the requirement of having an acre to put, make this a multi-unit, multiple-family zoning where he doesn't have the acre, so now he's reached back to the other side of the block to add some other land on to complete the acre. And that seems like a circumvention of the requirement. I moved there because of the greenery, the peace and quiet, and I just feel that with four families and eight cars across the street, that's not going to be so peaceful or quiet. I'm concerned about where the cars are going to park. We don't have room on our street. The street is narrow. There's, there's no parking on the street. I mean, you can maybe temporarily park there, but it's, it's not wide enough to allow parking on the street. So I'm just concerned about the traffic, the people, and I've been there for almost forty years. I guess I'm one of those aging population that you're talking about. And I love my neighborhood. I love my house, and I don't want to see duplexes, condos, apartment buildings. There should be other places along busier streets perhaps where you can afford to have all of the traffic coming in and out. And I thank you for your time and consideration.
Hello again. My name is Myron Thomas. I'm speaking on behalf against this duplex, primarily because there was a home that was demolished across the street from me. They did not build a duplex. They did not try to maximize it, and they did have more than one acre. They decided to build a single-family home because on that block are all single-family homes, and it retained the, the value of that street on McAllister. I would, I propose that that be the case on this street as well, given that property value do decline in a renters' environment. And I also want to speak to, has the city council decided on auxiliary dwelling units and any consideration for that being any options in single-family dwelling R1-rated environments? Thank you.
This was brought up last week as item E. And you were talking about building two homes, and the mayor had asked about a garage being attached to the homes. Now, if you're going to four, and at that time was only two, I'm trying to figure out how you'll have space for the second house and its garage, or space for its cars? Because the picture you show, they just barely fit in there. And now you're going to double it? How are you going to make that work? I don't see the pictures like you had last time, the showing, the drawings and the outlines and everything else. So I can't see how that works. I want to know, is there going to be another meeting when we get to speak and talk and look and see exactly what the picture is and what the layout or the build is, and how much space there is on the property for cars to go by one another? Because at this point, I'm going to kind of have to agree with the mayor. You don't have cars all on the street. And I thought that wasn't the intent that you were trying to have here. But I thought that was a big, major sticking issue last week was a garage. And if this is the same thing, how do you go now from last week to, to homes to now four? Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to PZR 24-0006? Okay. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Does the petitioner want to come up and do you have anything to respond to the, to the questions and comments? And then we'll, we'll take some questions from council.
I'm not sure what to say, to be honest. I can't remember all the points. It's been a long day. I had to explain a thirty-two million dollar bid to Ford earlier today. What were the points again? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Terry, do you have the site plan?
Well...
Or was it not included this week?
I do have the renderings, but we're here to consider the rezoning only. You did not want to go forward with the site plan at this time. And if this does get approved, you would have to come back and run the council for specific site plan issues.
Yes, sir.
I'll make some general comments, though, just because they got raised. We did ask our deputy assessor to give us an opinion on market value, and there's been year-in, year-over-year increase in the market value in that neighborhood. Twenty-one to twenty-two, there was a fifteen-point-two percent average increase. Twenty-two through twenty-three, three-point-seven percent. Twenty-three through twenty-four, four-point-one-five percent. I think the average median selling point is one-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty. And we have a chart that that neighborhood's been pretty stabilized and has increased in property value. And she does not see no reason that newly constructed duplexes would lower the values in the surrounding area. So that's one thing. And I'll let the proprietor respond to whether it's going to be sold or rented. We did look at average vehicle trips per day. Single families typically nine-point-five-seven. When you get into a multifamily, typically homeowners have fewer cars and have fewer trips. It's about six, six and a half. There would be a net increase of about six trips per day, going from two, single-family to four. It was always proposed to be two duplexes, so four units on the, on the lot. Single-family, the existing R1, single-family district only has a requirement, eight-foot side yard setback. If he goes to RT, there's a thirty-foot side yard setback, and I believe on the original concept plans, he proposed twenty. He would have to seek a waiver, but that would be actually further away than building two, single-family lots. The, the neighborhood has a good mixture of what we call Cape Cod's and ranches. And what I noticed today, driving around, is that many of the ranch style and even some of the split level had a one-car garage. Many of those, many of those garages have been converted into living space. And so, there, there is a trend. I, I understood that the mayor brought up the issue of garages, and that's something he'd have to consider, storage units also. But those are really site-specific issues if this gets rezoned. So I, I think I've kind of just generally tried to encapsulate some of the concerns of the residents. Again, he has the ability to, to build two, single-family homes on the lots currently. And, I mean, I don't want to put words in your mouth about why you first got excited about coming here and trying to create some density and providing market-rate, affordable housing. That's up, that's for you to say. I just that generally, though, we have looked, and we are looking at accessory dwelling units. We're looking at missing middle housing, that four to twelve units. We're looking at opportunities where we can help stabilize neighborhoods. We've seen a lot of vacant lots and empty buildings in that eight-to-nine-mile corridor. This is a way to infuse some new life, some new capital into the neighborhood without overdoing it. I'll just leave it at that, and I'd be happy to answer any specific questions that council may have.
Those, those are some good points. It's jogging my memory now. There are actually multiple empty homes within the neighborhood that are just not available for sale. People are holding on to their, their assets, obviously. They know that, they only go up with time. And then, obviously, you know, as far as property value goes, that's, that's great to hear, actually, that there's some math behind it. I, I just figured, you know, looking at a, some nice new housing is probably better than a burnt-out hole in the ground. So, you know, clearing the wreckage and putting something new in there is definitely going to improve the values of the area, no matter what you build. And yeah, even if this is met with disapproval, we could still build two, single-family homes. I just figured, you know, while we have the opportunity to do something different, especially seeing as how there's an interest in, in upping the density of the neighborhood, that this was the opportunity to, to upsize. If not, then, you know, maybe, I don't know.
Maybe the master plan needs to change.
But, and there's nothing I can do to stop people from buying three, four, five, six cars and leaving them all over their lawn. There's unfortunately, nothing we can do about that. The garage space, that's true. Even my house, right, the attached garage that was there, we converted it to habitable and built a separate detached garage. There's...
And then the question about the lot in the back, who would care for it? That doesn't change ownership.
Yeah.
That remains with the existing owner. It's just a zoning change, but that doesn't affect his property at all. And he's talked extensively with, I believe, Thomas, and he's well aware of what that means for him, which is just he can't build anything back there. But I think he's up to his coverage requirement already and has no issues with that.
Yeah.
So, but it doesn't, no, that the fence doesn't move, his property is still his property.
Yep. Yep, so I forgot that point. Yeah, so we're not purchasing that or doing anything with it. It'll remain with the owner of parcel zero-zero-six on, on Midway, and he will continue to obviously maintain his property. Yeah, so I, I don't have anything else unless there's further questions.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
You guys said you tore down trees.
Yes, there were several storm-damaged trees and dead trees. There was a very large one that was actually damaging my neighbor's property, which I removed free of charge. I actually just finished the breaking operations this weekend. I have a guy who's hauling off the wood. Yeah, there, there were several trees that are being removed. Everything that was, been removed was allowed without a permit. So those were dead, dangerous, storm-damaged trees, pine trees, ashbore trees. The remainder trees that are still standing that need to be cleared, I need to apply for a permit. But until I know what we can do, I, I can't begin removing anything. So we're, we're waiting to see if we can go through with this process, and then we'll, we'll curtail the rest of the trees that need to be removed to, to realize the site plan that I put forward.
Why not just build a single-family home in agreement with what's already around you?
Because we were hoping to increase the available amount of housing. Obviously, it's a little bit selfish, right? It's going to be more profitable for me to build four houses than just to build two. So it's obviously in my self-interest as well. But it is also for public good. There'll be more housing available.
That's my opinion, though. Okay, thank you.
Oh. Counselor Bates?
First of all, I remember last week when you showed the renderings, and it, they were interesting, and it was different. And I commend both of you for, you know, bringing something like that forward. I'm just not sure if this is the right piece of property to put that there, but there are other areas in Southfield, maybe we can develop something like that. I know you said for your own...
I only own this land, though.
Okay. But if you develop it with two, single-family homes, which I think, can you develop with two?
Yes, it's currently allowed to have two, single-family homes.
And each lot is how, what is each lot, the dimensions?
That's two-thirty by ninety for the one, because it took ten feet from the other parcel, and then seventy by two-thirty.
Oh, so those are nice-sized lots.
Yeah, I think it's minimum seventy feet width, so he has a hundred-and-sixty total.
Yeah.
I mean, as, as a lifelong resident of the city, I think if you build two, brand-new, nice homes, you're going to get more money for it than two duplexes. I, I know people that are looking for homes. They, they would not consider a duplex, but they would definitely consider a, single-family home, especially if it's brand-new. And based on what the planner said regarding... And based on what the planner said regarding the price of homes...
You're aware of maybe the Dunn-Scottus development?
I'm sorry?
The Dunn-Scottus development? Where there's a whole bunch of new houses going in?
Correct.
So I've spoken with Calabot Engineering, they're finding significant problems finding buyers at the 400, 500, $600,000 price point. They're finding nobody interested in buying, especially now as the market's cooling off. Also, the area of the value doesn't support that kind of pricing, unfortunately. I would have loved to do some luxury homes. It's just, we did an analysis with our agent of the area and just, it's just not there. You heard the property value proposition from Mr. Crowe is in the 170s, you know, 200 range. So we're trying to bear in mind the value of the market and of the area to make them saleable. We don't want to sit on inventory, right? Eventually, we want to get these sold and move on to our next projects.
Correct, but you don't have to build a 400, $500,000 home. I've seen other new homes...
To come to the same value as two duplexes, I would have to. I'm trying to rectify your math.
Right. It's just my own personal opinion. I just think the homes would sell faster if they were more at an affordable price. Yes. So, versus connected the duplex.
Right, and that's also why we're avoiding adding garages and all these extras, is to keep it affordable.
But with the street as, excuse me, the street as narrow as it is...
We're still legally required to have driveways.
Yes.
And like, you can do a carport very easily. It doesn't mean there won't be on-site parking. There still is a legal requirement for us to have a driveway of at least, I believe, 25 feet in depth, which is legal for two-car parking, and I believe we provided 50.
Okay, so that, so you'll be able to have three cars?
At least, you should.
Per unit, so it'll be a total of six cars, sharing the driveway?
No, they would each have their own driveway on either side, of 50 feet in depth.
But again, we haven't settled on building plans yet. I've only applied for the rezoning because I was told that this may not go through. So I'm waiting to see if we can even put in plans.
Thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
Mr. Crowe, I heard, and this is concerning. Duplex, would that, would this change, in essence, change the texture and/or the nature of that neighborhood?
Well, I took a close look at that. They're proposing basically 2,000-square-foot duplexes. So 1,000 square foot per unit floor area. And some of the single-family homes, the minimum is 1,000 square feet. If you look at the scale and size of these duplexes versus many of the single-family homes, they fit in with the neighborhood. Matter of fact, there are a number of larger ranches and split levels that are out of character with the scale of many of the Cape Cod's single-family homes. So, again, we're just dealing with rezoning, but the conceptual plans that I looked at with the setbacks, as I said, there's a greater setback on the side yards from what a single-family could be built. The scale, as far as the height, the size and the setback fits well with the single-family character of that neighborhood. So I don't think they're out of character. You've heard of, in some other suburban communities where people tear down smaller homes and build Bigfoot, the tower over the single-family, more affordable housing. This is not that. This fits, this fits in more with the size, scale and character of the existing single-family Cape Cod's and ranches in the neighborhood. And we're going from a density of two units to four. So it's not like it's, you know, 40-unit apartment complex going in this neighborhood.
So, okay, all right, I think you answered my question.
Okay. And I'll just add, you know, I know that you compared this project to the ones that were done on Westland by Habitat. But I think those homes also looked a little bit different. The spacing between homes was different. I did see your proposed or conceptual site plan. And there are differences in the homes and how they are spread, how they're laid out as well from the street versus your plan. So, you know, it's, they're comparable, but they're not exactly the same, even given the, your plans versus the neighborhood itself. So just, but I do commend your creativity in trying to add some additional housing to the neighborhood.
The rules are difficult to work with, but we found a way to work with them.
Agreed. Counsel, what would you like to do?
Just want to remind counsel, you're only acting on the rezoning request. Should that go forward, they would have to come back for specific site plan approval and you would be able to weigh in on the actual design and layout of those units.
All right, I mean, if there's no, if there's no vote, there's no vote. But, and then...
If there's no, if there's no motion to move it forward, then it fails for lack of support, right?
Correct, yes. But I'm not hearing a motion, so...
Let me ask a question, because I get to step out to use the restroom. So, when they bring their site plan, and if they decide to say, "I'm going to go with a single-family home," they could do that or no? It has to stay duplex?
I think you can approve, the way the ordinance is written in the RT is, it requires a minimum, I think, of three attached units. But if counsel can approve less than that, so in theory, you could approve single-family, and I'll double-check that. But they would have to, in order to do less than four attached units, they would have to come back. You get, you get to weigh in on those units. And let me, while you're, while you're still talking, I'll pull my ordinance and double-check.
So, Councilman, it's already zoned for single-family, but you're saying, you're asking specifically...
Can the site plan that they bring back to us, can they bring us a site plan?
That's single-family, even if we approve the rezoning?
Correct. That's my question.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if this was asked while I was waiting, I apologize if it was. Did, how open are you to go with single-family?
I mean, I'm open to it. Obviously, if this motion fails, that's all I can do. So I'm open to it. I was just hoping to do more. So either way, I'm building either two houses or I'm building two duplexes. So I am open to doing that.
Can I ask, and if you don't want to answer it, that's fine. But is, can you tell your, why your preference is for the duplexes versus the single home? Is it cost or what?
No, we stand to make more money.
Okay, and is it your intentions to rent or sell? I remember we asked that last time.
Yeah, we're looking to sell these.
And you feel the, and I just don't know, the duplexes will give you more profit margin?
Yes, ma'am.
Between construction?
Yeah, there's efficiencies, because they're also sharing the walls, right? So there, it's actually more cost-effective to build them, which also helps lower the price, but also because we're doing more quantity, it just leads to a more profitable project.
So...
So obviously, I'd like to do good, but I'm also helping myself out. It's, everybody wins.
Correct. And you heard my question that I asked, and I'm just, would like you to consider the single-family homes. Just that if it were you invested in your home and that happens, because it could be an issue with parking, I just don't know. But I'm not trying to knock your plans down, but...
So, yeah, because we...
We certainly need homes.
Yeah, because we live in the neighborhood.
Right, I remember you saying that.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, we live four blocks towards Nine Mile, so we walk over.
Yeah, I literally walk to the property, so, although when I have my tools, I use my car.
I just will ask if you would certainly consider that. And hopefully, your profit margins could be almost the same, if not, but... Okay, all right.
Yeah, the, yes, understood.
So do we have my, answer on my question that...
Yes, I have that if you're ready for it.
Okay, yes, yes.
So it says the city council may, after recommendation from a planning commission, permit one-family detached dwellings and one-family attached dwellings of less than three attached units, where they find that it's reasonable and convenient, necessary for the creation of effective density. So they do have the option to build single-family in the RT, subject to counsel approval.
Okay. So I want to make sure everybody hears that, the residents as well, that approval of this doesn't mean that they can't come back with a single-family home plan. I guess I would just ask that, you really just consider what the other residents are saying? That if it were you, if it were your parents who have invested many, many, many years? And I'm not saying you wouldn't put your best efforts for it in that, but that's a lot of...
You know, I'll just piggyback off that. I mean, you saw the counsel was even hesitant to approve the rezoning. So personally, to me, if we had that hesitancy now, if you come back with duplexes, I don't know how, I don't think, again, I can't speak for everyone, but I don't, I don't think it will be favorable, or there'll be that hesitancy as well. So I don't even know why...
You just don't know how it would go.
Correct.
So we want your project to succeed, but we're just asking you to consider the possibility of two single homes. Or one, or what would it be?
Two.
Two?
If I could, just, I want to be clear so they understand. By right, right now, they can build two single-family units.
Correct.
But if it gets rezoned, they need permission from the council to build the single-family or the duplexes. So it does tie their hands.
Right, and to, I don't want to...
I was just, I was just going to say, again, if you could get the feel of the land, we can't even get a motion on the floor.
Right, so if they change the zoning, it changes the by-right use? Which would change it to three attached by right, instead of single-family by right?
Right, so personally, I don't want to speak for you, but based on the feeling of the counsel, we didn't really feel comfortable rezoning it. It almost feels like, even if we did rezone it, we wouldn't allow duplexes to be built, or we wouldn't favor that. So I don't know if it will hurt you more if we vote for the rezoning, because then if you want to build a single-family home, you have to come back to us anyway. If we leave it alone, and as you've heard the comments, we think single-family would be better, and as long as you're within your boundaries, you don't really need to come back. Maybe the zoning board of appeals, but not the city council. We could be tying your hands more and hurt you more if we approve the zoning, based on the feeling from my colleagues.
No, I think I understand now. So then, I guess, if the council would like two single-family homes to be built, then please just deny the motion. Because otherwise, we'll all have more headache and I'll just be out the grand.
So I don't think, I don't, I don't think we necessarily need, that, I don't think we necessarily need to deny the motion. We just won't have a motion. Is that correct, Mr. Crowe?
Well, they could request that you take action. Now, if you do deny it, then pretty much they have to wait a year before we reconsider, unless there's some significant change. They could withdraw, and I'll defer to the attorney. They can withdraw their request, and then no action is taken, and then you're, you're not tied down. Or they could vote, they could vote, we're not having a motion, and then nothing happens. But I, you know, you need to consider the, what your hands might be tied if they take action tonight.
Yeah, I remember there was a particular neighborhood where there were established houses and someone was trying to build a smaller house. And the neighbors protested because it just didn't go in with the rest of the houses. And rightfully so, and the value was, would have been different. I think this is sort of like the same thing, and, not like, it is the same thing. And I think with respect to the residents and the value of their homes, I think we need to really look at that. And I think that's what we're really saying, you know, too. And if you live in the neighborhood, it's just like where you live. There are certain things you wouldn't want where you are. And in accordance with that, if you've got single-family, you really want to build, have at it with the two single-family homes, I think that'd be really great. And I've seen where houses sell here very fast. So it's just really a seller's market. So, I mean, we have some good real estate agents here, if you don't have one yourself. But I think that you would do well.
So do you want us to, do you want us to ignore this, or do you want us to vote on it?
May I respectfully understand why Habitat was given the approval and why I'm failing to be even considered? I'm just, I'm trying to understand.
Well, if I could, and I'll defer to the city administrator, the mayor, but I believe there's multiple units that was, was considered for the rezoning. It wasn't just two duplexes. They were approved for multiple lots at the same time they got the rezoning.
Yes, they're building six down the street.
Yeah, so that's one difference. It wasn't just one, they built one, two unit first, but it was rezoned as multiple parcels for the eventual six duplexes. So that, that is a difference. There was a larger land mass that was being considered for these duplexes.
And I guess for me... Is, so the parcel of land on Midway Avenue, it's, it's not like that's even going to be added to the property. Well, that's, to me, I don't like that, because it's not expanding the area, so it doesn't help, and so...
It's not, that space is not required to meet the square footage requirements, to put something like a duplex. It's only required to meet the square footage minimum for rezoning. So it has, yeah, so it has nothing to do with lots, square footage requirements for how much home we can build. It's only because of the zoning and the spot zoning restrictions?
I guess what I'm saying is, I really wish that that parcel would really add to the depth of the property and all of that, because it's like, for lack of a better word, useless. You know, you just need it to get this, so... But I just want you to understand at least from me. We support the housing, it's just that, I don't know, I've always questioned that duplex right there. So I just don't want you to lose your project altogether, but I'm one of seven.
Counsel, what's, what's your pleasure? Again, if there's no motion, it just dies, or we can vote and see what happens?
And I'm sorry, if it dies, what's the consequence?
If we, if we vote or not...
They have to wait a year?
If we vote and it gets, we vote no to the rezoning, they have to wait at least a year, unless there's some other major change to their...
Right, for example, if they were to acquire one of the lots east or west, that would be a different consideration. But if it gets denied, then they couldn't move forward with this proposed zoning for at least a year.
But if we, if we take no action, they could redo their plan and come back with another idea that may require rezoning, it may not, we don't know. Right now, two single-family homes can be built on each lot, oh, let me rephrase that. One, I know, one, one single-family home can be built on each of those parcels right now. So that, that is still an option. Again, we take no action, they can do that, probably not even come back to city council, depending on their plans. Everything's always dependent on the plans. Or they just do nothing and sell the, sell the lots. If we, if we approve the rezoning, they can, they have two options. They can come back with a duplex plan and we would, would go through the planning process and come back to counsel, and we would vote yes or no. Or they could come back with a plan for a single home on a single lot, and we would still have to approve that or deny it, because the zoning requires city council action, because it's no longer a single-family zone. Does that help answer?
Because it's less than three units in an RT district.
Correct.
Yeah, that's, that's what I understand as well. So, obviously, if our intent was to build single families from the outright, I would have had dried-in structures by now. We would have just gotten going. I do want to go with the duplexes, so I guess...
Do you need to vote?
I, I am asking, then, if we can...
Or no vote?
Yeah, if we can ask for a vote, I guess, or whatever the motion.
Okay. So, through the chair, we do have a recommended resol- resolution, and then you can either vote it up or down.
Okay, so, does counsel understand what, what our options are? Uh, well, if someone wants to make a motion, we can make a motion and see how it plays out?
And again, if we approve this, we can still deny the site plan.
They have to come back for a site plan approval, yep, if it's less than three units.
But...
So, if you approve it, you'll see us again regardless.
I understand that, but I'm, I'm trying to understand why you don't see and do it our way, where we're...
So, you can just deny it.
Because we don't want to tell you no on record.
Oh.
At least I don't.
So, right, so if, if, if we, we don't want to necessarily waste your time. I think, I think there's a consensus on, on our council, because nobody wants to make the motion if it's gonna die. But, if we, if we make the motion, and it, and we approve it, you'll come back with duplexes, and based on the, the feelings that I'm getting from my colleagues, it will die anyway, and you're just wasting more time and money. To me, if, I would just say, just leave it alone, because then you can always come back with a single-family home, which I think...
We don't have to come back?
You don't have, you don't, you, you, well, again, may or may not, depending on what you decide to do, but generally, single-family would, would go straight through.
Does that make sense?
If, if we, if we just don't take a motion, we don't...
Just leave it alone.
I mean, well, so...
Just drop it, and just drop it.
I'll, I...
No motion.
So then...
Wait, because if we vote it down, they gotta wait a year.
Correct.
Did you hear what we're saying? If it fails, you gotta wait a year.
Look, there it goes.
There it is.
Tell them, just leave it, no motion.
I, if, that's, I can't, if, if, you know, I need to wait for my colleagues, if, if there's no motion, there's no motion, and we'll move on to our next item.
Does, does that mean I have to wait a year for attempting another rezoning, or to apply for construction? I'm trying to understand, what's this year that I have to wait?
So, if, if we do noth- if we vote, if we take it to a vote, and it gets voted down, you have to wait a year for the rezoning of, um, RT?
Yeah, if I could, you could go in tomorrow and submit a building permit for two single-family.
If they vote it down.
You can go to, do that tomorrow, whether they vote yes or no.
Okay.
If you want to consider duplexes, you'd have to wait another year to come back for that. If they vote for some reason to approve the RT, you're taking the chance that when you come back with the site plan, that you're not gonna get favorable approval of less than three units. So, I think they're trying to help you out here. Now, technically, the planning commission made a favorable recommendation, wasn't unanimous, but I think it's, that's what we're proposing, is recommending approval. You can vote that up or down, and then we're done with it.
Now, if we take no action, and it dies for lack of a motion, can they come back?
We'd have to start the process.
The process would start over again anyway, okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
If there is, um, if, if you don't rezone, and you decide to build single-family homes, you don't have to come to council.
That's correct.
It's administrative approval, like anybody else that builds a single-family home.
Right, so...
So, you know, that's your dilemma.
But I'm not hearing a, a motion from my colleagues anyway, which I think may be beneficial to you.
You don't need emotions.
We don't, we don't need one, okay. Well, for, for lack of a motion, this, this item is finished. Um, it's, well, the, the...
It dies.
It dies. It's not, it's not approved, it's not disapproved, it's just, it's dead. It's, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've never experienced that one before. All right. Our next item is PZR MUCD 24-0001, a mixed-use district rezoning, um, for, um, Joseph Nowitzki from JSN Architecture on behalf of A&amp;A Business Group to rezone the parcel at 19111 West Ten Mile Road.
Thank you through the chair. Again, this is a mixed-use corridor district to rezone, um, and renovate a vacant office building for a mixture of commercial, multifamily residential uses. The property is currently zoned OS. The future land use is for local mixed-use, but it is, has the mixed-use corridor district overlay. Existing site, um, building's been vacant, uh, for quite some time. Uh, this is the elevation from Ten Mile Road looking south. It's a mid-century modern building with parking underneath, and the site plan is to convert it to retail space, uh, fronting Ten Mile, opening up the atrium space of the interior office building for more light, redo the, uh, parking lot with some additional landscaping, creating an interior courtyard. This is the first floor plan, which includes retail space, and then second floor and third floor. Um, these are some of the building elevation rendering. The, uh, Ten Mile frontage will have outdoor courtyard seating. Uh, this is the, um, what the space would look like adjacent to the Ten Mile public right-of-way. Uh, the underground parking would be reserved for tenants, uh, and then they've opened up, uh, the interior of the space to allow for additional light. There'll be balconies on the above levels, looking down into the courtyard, and then they have a rooftop, um, amenity for the residents. And it'll be secured with, um, an opaque screening, uh, at a certain height around the parapet. So, with that, I'd like to invite the petitioner come, to make, uh, any comments I would like.
If you could give your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening, uh, uh, mayor, uh, council. I applaud you for your patience. Wow, um, you, you've got a lot more stamina than I do. Uh, my name's Joe Nowitzki, architect, uh, of record for this project. I'm here with the staff and the owner to, uh, answer any of your questions that you may have. Uh, we're, we're excited to take a derelict old building. We have taken this, uh, task of finding and revitalizing old buildings for our entire career, and, uh, this one has got us really excited, because it's a perfect opportunity to take something that has laid fallow for many decades at this point, and put it into a vibrant part of the community. This could be an exemplary project for Detroit, and we need it badly, and we're excited to do it, and we've got a great owner and, uh, wonderful staff. So, with that, I'll let you ask any questions.
Do you have anything to add?
Yeah, my name is Shmuel Baroka, so I'm from, uh, Jackson, Florida. Um, this is a project that I've really been looking forward to for a long time. It's something very different than really what we've done in the past. Um, with, especially with the retail in the front, this is really something that really talks to us, and we're really excited about. Um, I'm open to any questions, or...
All right, well, we will have a public hearing first, and then we'll see what questions come up. Thank you. All right, I will now open the public hearing for PZR MUCD 24-0001, a mixed-use corridor district rezoning, rezoning request of Joseph Nowitzki to rezone 19111 West Ten Mile Road from OS Office Service to MUCD Mixed Use Corridor District to permit renovations of the vacant office building for a mixture of commercial and multiple-family residential uses. Each speaker will have three minutes. Please give your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pamela Dero, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. Um, I had friends that had offices in this building for many years, and what I always liked about this building was, you drive underground, you park, you go inside, and you take the elevator up. Being originally from Brooklyn, New York, it always gave me that little bit of experience, being back home in the Big Apple. To see their renderings, wow, it's incredible that that building that was unique in that time could look like this and be even more unique during this current time. I'm so in favor of it, and we still need a lot of affordable housing and apartments in Southfield. I'm so happy that the population in Southfield is growing, and that we, if my memory is correct, during the census, we gained about 6,000 more residents in the city. So, to have a growing community, we need to grow the housing market, but this is absolutely beautiful. Um, it's just beautiful. So, I just want to say that I'm in favor of the rezoning for this project, and I can't wait to see what it's gonna look like. And I'm sure Jeffrey Feiger will be appreciative that this is going to be a new development, and, you know, a lot of these younger people that are getting these great jobs, making great money, can come to a development like this and get an apartment or affordable housing. So, I'm in favor of it, and you guys did a great job on the renderings. Thank you so much.
Greg Keeler, Southfield resident, one mile from this project, was where I live at. I can't wait to see it there, next to the Pancake House, across the street from Jeffrey Feiger, and just the outside, where you can go to restaurants and eating everything else. And I think it will draw a lot of people to be there, just because of its uniqueness and beauty. So, I'm looking forward to it. I hope you all pass this.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to the mixed-use corridor district rezoning? All right, public hearing is closed. Uh, Mr. Crowe?
Yeah, I just, um, when we created the mixed-use corridor district, we were looking at these shallow-depth lots along our mileroads, as well as some of the antiquated, older office buildings, to try to breathe some new life in it. Very excited that our first, um, project under this new zoning, um, tool is, is at a caliber like this, and I, I feel that this is done correctly, if it lives up to the renderings, that it'll be a catalyst for a lot more adaptive reuse of these older buildings on shallow lots along the corridor. So, um, be happy to answer any questions. I'd like to have the architect and his team come back up and maybe talk about some of the innovations, um, that you have incorporated in the project, and then answer any questions that the council may have.
Does counsel have any questions for this item, or for the petitioner? Mr. Mayor?
I just think that, you know, you define a city by its architecture, and this is a, this is absolutely an innovative, great addition to a building that's needed love for more than a decade. So, I think what you've proposed is phenomenal.
Thank you.
All right, well, if we have no questions from counsel, I'll, oh, who has a question?
No.
Mr. Hicks wanted to make the motion. Oh, we do have, you have a question? Uh, we have one question. Go ahead.
The privacy screening, is it temporary? Um, is the privacy screening temporary, or is it, um, the, you know...
That's, that's permanent. It's got the logo on the look of, of, we, we were gonna call it the Bird's Nest, but there's a building that was already named that in the Olympic arenas, and so, that, but that image of the scattering of the screen and the opaque quality is, we're hoping to actually, uh, uh, have a bus, uh, stop in front of the building as well, to encourage that interaction with the community. Um, and we're gonna ta- try and put that same image on the bus screen as well. So, the bus screen, the, the screening on the building, and the screening of the, uh, the outdoor terrace will all be the same fabric, if you will.
Save this space.
Okay, Councilman Hicks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that we approve PZR MUCD 24-0001.
Support.
We have a motion by Councilman Hicks, supported by Councilman Brightwell, to approve PZR MUCD 24-0001, as presented with the recommendations from the city planner and the planning commission. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
Hold up, through the chair. I just want to make sure that, um, it would be introducing ordinance number 1795, because we did not act...
Four.
Four?
1786.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
It's four, it's four.
So, you're, you're, you're on top of that, yeah.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we introduce ordinance number 1794.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to approve, to introduce ordinance number 1794. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Did you do six?
We didn't vote on five, or four earlier, so we have to go in order. All right, next is PSLU 24-0015. It's a special use request of the Mobile Southfield LLC to add beer, wine, liquor sales to an existing gas station convenience store at 25826 Southfield Road.
Yes, uh, through the chair, this is, um, again, just to, um, add beer, liquor, wine sales with some site plan amenity improvements. Um, hours of operation, 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM, Sunday through Wednesday, Thursday through Saturday, 6:00 AM to 12:00 AM. Uh, current zoning is B3, general business. Future land use is local mixed-use. Um, we did identify down the street where there are other alcohol sales. Uh, this is the current site, existing conditions, and then the site landscape plan. Um, again, there will be some pedestrian amenity improvements to the site, some additional landscaping. Floor plan of, uh, the interior, where they proposed to have liquor, beer, wine sales. This is the interior design inspiration images provided by the petitioner. I don't believe there's any physical changes to the elevation happening. Is that correct? And, um, before we go to a public hearing, do you guys have anything you would like to add?
Hello, good evening, counsel. Uh, I'm Andrew Attisha, the applicant for 25826 Southfield Road. Um, we're just adding another product to our selection, um, and happy to take any questions you guys have.
Can we see the address?
It's, um...
28.
25826 Southfield Road.
Well, no, I thought the petitioners had to state their name and their address.
Oh, I'm sorry. You need to state your name and address.
My name is Andrew Atisha, and I'm the applicant for 25826 Southfield Road.
Good evening, council. My name is Ken Moreland, 29895 Greenfield Road, Southfield, Michigan. I'm with Dorch and Martin and Associates. We're the architects, representing the applicant. As Mr. Crowde indicated, there will be some site amenities such as the public approach or connection from the public walk to the building. The exterior of the building does not require any modification, nor does the footprint require any expansion. The interior will be refreshed to accommodate and the new stock and merchandise in the coolers on the floor and additional storage. With that, I would open it up to any questions or comments.
Well, we'll have the public hearing and then see what questions may come up.
Thank you.
All right. We will now have a public hearing for PSLU 24-0015, special use request of Mobile Southfield to add beer, wine, liquor sales to the existing gas station convenience store at 25826 Southfield Road. Each speaker will have three minutes. Please give your name and address for the record. Okay. Seeing no one coming up, the public hearing is closed. Council, do you have any questions for the petitioner? Mr. Councilman Hicks?
Thank you, sir. Can we go back to the picture that showed the other liquor establishments? So what my concern is, well, one, that circle, that's my subdivision. And what my concern is, is that within a quarter of a mile from my house, I can walk to five different locations to acquire liquor. I understand that the business wants to thrive, and I'm supportive of you thriving. But as we heard earlier on, there was opposition and concern about having three gas stations on a corner. So now I'm going to have five places to acquire liquor within a quarter of a mile from my home. As I stated prior, my family moved us out here to get away from having a liquor store on every corner. Now I'm going to have five. To me, that's not a division for Southfield. So it's not necessarily a question for the petitioners. It's just more of a concern of, at one point, we had talked about putting a moratorium, but maybe these were already in the pipeline. I don't understand the why. Why do we need to continue to add more, again, within a quarter of a mile from my house? Thank you.
If I remember, just to give Mr. President a hand, if I remember correctly, Mr. Hicks, when that came up, I had that very same concern. I did ask for that moratorium, and we were instructed that we couldn't do that, if I'm correct. Am I right, Terry?
Well, I mean, I'll defer to the city attorney. I believe the issue was that council had recently just amended the ordinance to allow for these uses. So to put a moratorium a few months after you've just permitted them, I don't know if that was consistent. The other thing I'll say, again, just to remind the council, that the number of beer, wine, and liquor sales is based on the overall population of the city. If this, and we have approximately 77 of these that can be established based on our population, if this was in any other type of retail establishment, they would not need to come here before council. Because it's at a gas station, it's a special land use, it gives us the opportunity to improve the site. Many of our older gas stations were approved prior to site plan approval. And we've seen a lot of investment. I'm not here to advocate one way or the other. It's just that we went through a process of public hearing, and council did approve unanimously the approval of sales of liquor at gas stations not too long ago. And I'll defer to the city attorney. If you want to vote to put a moratorium on future ones, maybe now we're a little further out from your approval from last fall. But I think that when this came up six months ago, it was, this is just on the heels of council amending the ordinance to allow for liquor sales at gas stations. I think that was the discussion, and I'll defer to the city attorney.
Good evening, council. Through the chair, that is correct. When this came up, and I don't have the research in front of me, but I can send an email to you, Councilman Cruz. But because we had passed the ordinance, and it was the law on the books at that time, we didn't, we weren't in a position to do a moratorium, because normally the moratoriums are done to do a study prior to you enacting the local ordinance. But I will look at it again, and then if there's an amendment or something you want to do to what's already on the books, then that's possibly when we say, okay, we're going to do a moratorium as far as if we want to continue doing it the way we've been doing and want to change it. But I do have some research that we did do, and Plan of Crowde is correct, that we had just enacted it just a year ago, I think a year ago this past Monday.
Through the chair, I don't even believe it's been a year. But again, to your point, the moratorium is to be put in place to study an item, and we just got done with an extensive studying, public hearings, and amendment at the time. So I think when this was, when this was being discussed, it was right on the heels of us amending the ordinance the first time at the end of last year.
So just, I want to piggyback off something you said, and then we have another question. But you mentioned that if this was just a standalone retail store, they wouldn't even need to come to council. So...
Again, we've used the example, if it was a mom and pop store, if it was a drugstore, if it was a Myers, they could get the beer, wine, and liquor through the state based on the number that we have available. And the last I checked, we still had a couple dozen available based on our population. The only reason it is coming to us is because gas stations are special land use approved in their district, and we, when we developed this, we had other site standards that needed to be considered to make sure that we had pedestrian access, ice chesters inside, we had the bike rack, landscaping, and all those things. That was the trade-off for the consideration.
So essentially, it was, it's a lot, if it was a regular, like you said, mom and pop store, other type of store, as long as they have a license that are available, they can get it. But we did it for the gas stations because they're a special land use, and then we can also work with them to improve the site and different amenities within the site as well.
Right, okay.
Councilwoman Hoag, you have a question?
Well, Mr. -- Councilman Hicks can finish up since he's got another question.
Well, man, I respect that if that were the case, but it's not the case. Other entities aren't coming saying we would like to open up a mom and pop shop. It's only these gas stations. So, I mean, let's talk about the people who are actually requesting versus those who have not. And right now, the question on the table on the floor is for this entity that would like to request an additional revenue stream. If it were marketable for the mom and pop shop to do this, then yeah, we'd probably have a few more. But that should probably be a question and/or concern. Am I going to really generate the revenue that I need when four of the places are less than a half a mile away? Just something to consider.
There's a lot of other areas that have this similar situation. You know, Southfield Road is a very heavily trafficked road, a lot of houses, you know, places I go to, for example, I go to my mom's house. She lives on Orchard Lake. If you were to go to 13 and Orchard, I believe there's three or four establishments over there selling alcoholic products. If you were to go down Orchard Lake, at Pontiac Trail and Orchard Lake, I think there's six within a quarter mile. Even if you were to go down, up and down Woodward, you'd see them all. A lot of these heavily trafficked roads, you know, it's a very nice convenience to offer these types of products to the customers traveling on these roads, and even the residents. And all we want to do really is just give in other approvals in the area. We just want to compete. We just want to be on a level playing field with other retailers in the area. And my experience in having another store that offers these products, all you really see is a little bit more foot traffic. But the revenue it brings in allows me to, you know, just really make my store a much nicer place for customers to shop. And when there's this type of competition, you know, every store is wanting to get the customer in the door. So at the end of the day, what happens is the price drops, and it's really better for the consumer. Because in these type of areas, liquor prices are somewhat higher than other areas that are not as competitive as this. So, I mean, you'll see, you'll see liquor prices or alcoholic products in general just drop, and you'll see nicer stores because of the revenue that it brings in.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Councilman Hoag?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Dollar General, are they closed because of that fire?
Yes, they, because of insurance and the fire, but they, if you've, I just went by there today. They've made a lot of progress to the remodeling to open back up.
And I do understand the concerns of my colleague, and I'm sorry for that. But something you just said, that it allows you to have additional stream of income to better the location, because I'll tell you where I stay, the gas station is horrible. So I'm not going to say where I live, but I don't know, I'm not saying I want them to get liquor, but they need to do something. But so, I, again, I, I do have empathy for my colleague, but I'll just ask that you continue to be good neighbors to the community. And I'm just sorry that we're in this predicament, but they were in the process. And so it wouldn't be right to stop it. And, you know, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Councilman Brightwell, you have a question?
I have no question.
Are there any other questions from council? Councilwoman Haynes?
She talked about the upkeep. I think that's a guarantee, is something that we would like to see ongoing consistently all the time, just a nice upkeep of the property, of landscaping looking really nice all the time. Because it, when you're right at the front, everybody sees it, and it's just a standard, you know, which is not that expensive. But just the investment in continuing an ongoing basis. I mean, I wish I could give some of these businesses a report card on the horrible-looking landscape and the way some of the things are, because it really doesn't do our city any justice. So I just trust that you all would do that.
Of course, of course. I mean, just to add on, so I also live, as mentioned, in the neighborhood, on the other side of Southfield Road. And I'm up and down Lincoln, which the city administrator will tell you I'm always complaining about its, the construction that's needed on that road. But, you know, I will say that, you know, you do keep the area of your store clean. The parking lot's swept, there's really no litter. It's, you do keep it up, and hopefully that, should this get approved, and even if it doesn't get approved, hopefully, you know, you will continue to increase the landscaping and just the overall look of the store and the area that you have.
Yeah, we've, we've actually made an investment in the landscaping this past week. So, I mean, it looks beautiful over there.
I haven't driven down it yet because of the construction they're doing on Lincoln. But, Councilwoman Hoag?
I was just, I forgot to add, and I hope that the Southfield way is that we don't have all this signage that says liquor. That's worse. That, so you don't plan to put this big old sign up that says liquor sold here. Because when you are a good business partner, they'll come.
I believe that, too.
Because my snack place there in here now, and I drive out of my way to go there. So I may have to come visit yours as well. Thank you.
Please do, please do. Thank you.
Terry?
Councilman Brightwell?
Terry, along those lines, do we still have a sign ordinance? Is it enforced?
The sign ordinance is regulated by the building department, and it's enforced by our coach department.
Right. Okay, I know.
And I believe the liquor control license regulates the signage dealing with the sale of liquor.
Okay, okay, good. All right. With respect to that, you ready for a motion?
If no one has any further questions, I will entertain a motion. So, yes.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve PSLU 24-0015, special use request of Mobile Southfield LLC, as presented.
It has been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to approve PSLU 24-0015, with all the recommendations from the planner. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
One opposed, motion passes.
Excuse me, through the chair, who is the support?
Councilwoman Haynes.
Thank you. Our next item is the motion on the site plan.
Council, do you have any questions on the site plan? I know we've gone through it.
I agree.
Yeah, Councilwoman Banks?
Can you go back to the rendering, please, on the site plan? So when we discussed about, the other picture, so you said you are not going to have big signs, liquor sold here, correct?
Hearing what you're saying, I won't have a big sign that says liquor, but I would probably have it somewhere, but I won't have it in your face. You know what I mean?
Well, again, and you correct me if I'm wrong, I think the liquor control license limits your signage on the sale of alcohol. Plus, it has to fit within the sign ordinance that allows so much signage per facade.
And I guess, you know, my question is, do we know offhand what that is, how big that would be?
Again, that's reviewed by the building department, so we don't typically deal with signage at this level.
Terry, could that be something, can you ask the building department to, I know it's not, you know, I know it's a separate...
No, I mean, I...
Can you ask them to forward the council the signage?
Of course I...
Sign ordinance?
Of course I can. I'll specifically ask dealing with liquor sales, and we'll see what we can get, and I'll send, you know, or I'll have Mr. Woodward respond at some future time.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilman Brightwell?
No, I was going to just go and make a motion to...
We got a question from Councilwoman Haynes.
Does the signage include out, exterior, or both interior and exterior? Because some stores have pasted paper...
Right, so unfortunately, and I brought this issue up before, if the signs from the inside of the window, it doesn't count as exterior signage. So the signage that's regulated by ordinance is exterior signage only.
Okay, so who regulates the interior signage?
There's no regulation of interior signage.
Okay, so you're going to have all of that kind of signage all over the walls and stuff, where people just scream?
All I can say, it'll be classy. It won't be, it won't be, I don't know how I would say it.
What's allowed?
Wait, what is classy?
It's like, you know, it wouldn't take up the whole, like, all the windows, you know, it would just be like nice, uniform signage.
Not a lot, though. It's not a lot.
What is it?
It's not a lot of signage.
Not a lot of signage, no.
I mean, I'm just saying, because I don't, just my opinion, I just think that if someone wanted liquor, I mean, the signs, once you, you can see the big, the cases there, you know, you don't have to have a whole lot of, you know, it just looks messy.
Again, there's regulations on how big and how much they can.
No, I'm talking about inside.
Well, I understand that.
I thought, Mr. Crowe, that there, we do have an ordinance on interior signage as it relates to windows, because they can't block so much space within a window.
Well, the, I'll just get... Well, the, I'll just get clarification on that.
Okay. Yeah, because Councilman Cruz was reminding me, you know, we've had that discussion before with other stores that, you know, that, that plastered pa, you know, advertisements or pictures all over the windows. There should be an ordinance, I believe, but we will get a clarification, as that is not Mr. Crowe's department, so.
Well, not just the liquor, it's another store that we approved, that business, and they have paper all on the windows and all kinds of stuff in front of it. It's horrible.
Well, once we get a clarification, we can see if that fits. But, any other questions regarding this item? All right, Mr. Brightwell?
I move that we approved PSP two-four dash zero-zero-one-two site plan as presented.
Support. It has been moved by Councilwoman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Cruz, to approve PSP two-four dash zero-zero-one-two site plan review request of Mobile Southfield at two-five eight-two-six Southfield Road to add beer, wine, liquor sales to the existing gas station with all the recommendations from the planner. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
One opposed, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Council. Have a good night.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
To the council, if you don't want to keep having this discussion, then you need to repeal your ordinance.
Yes.
It's as simple as that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Do I have the legislative?
That's right.
All right, the legislative committee will discuss that. I just confirmed with the chairperson for that committee, so. All right, we have, next we have one item for discussion and our action, that is PZTA two-four dash zero-zero-zero-two, a zoning text amendment, and the public hearing for this was previously held back on July fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. And, Mr. Crowe?
Well, through the chair, I mean, part of the discussion was that when the original public hearing was held on July fifteen, none of the proprietors that had originally requested were here to answer questions or to advocate on behalf of why they wanted the extended hours of operation. I know they've sat here patiently through five hours of our commission meeting, so if we could at least ask them to come up and make their case first, and then, we did, the other thing that council had asked us to do was to look at our surrounding neighbor communities to determine what their hours of operation was, which we did, and then we were asked to include population for each of those and number of marijuana retailers or provisioning centers, so we had that additional information. So those, those were the two asks of us during the public hearing, and I know we have representatives, I believe, from both of the marijuana provisioning centers, so if we could give them an opportunity to at least make their case, and then if you have to answer any questions that you may have.
So if they.
And again, just to reiterate, what the request is to increase the hours of operation from Saturday, which is existing from nine AM to six PM, up to nine PM, and Sunday from ten AM to six PM to nine PM. And that falls, that falls within the comparable range of hours of operation for all of our adjacent communities.
All right, well, if the proprietors want to step up, again, we just want your name and address, and as, just as the city planner explained, we're looking for the reasoning, why you want to extend your hours, what type of business you think it's going to increase.
My name is David Moiski. I run the day-to-day operations at Loom off of two-six-seven-zero Lhasa Road. The biggest reason is that a lot of our customers do come to us on a, on a weekend basis and are requesting this. This is Southfield residents that we know are spending this money in other municipalities. They're, they're going directly from our store. I've sat in our parking lot for, for a time of, you know, hour or longer afterwards just to, you know, greet those customers and see if it is even worth us staying open, and we have a lot of Southfield residents that are asking us to stay open. It's not that they're not consuming or purchasing these products, they're just going and spending that money elsewhere, and we'd like to keep that money in Southfield, and we'd like to keep our customers very valued, as, as we do.
My name is Nadia Lutfi. I'm at two-eight-nine-three-zero Telegraph Road, Dreams Canada, and same, our customers request that we stay open later. A lot of our customers work on Saturdays, so it's hard for them to get to us by four, six PM, and I just, it's a service we can offer our customers, and as far as safety, it's gonna be sa, are we at six more hours of the weekend that we have an armed security guard and staff in the store, so it's more, it's safer when we're open.
All right, Council, do you have any questions specific to?
John Abbo, attorney for Loom Cannabis Co. at two-six, two-six-seven-six-zero Lhasa Road. I simply just wanted to state that, you know, we've done this, we have several stores throughout the state of Michigan, thirty-eight to be exact, and thirty-seven of those municipalities, we have the ability to operate till nine PM on Saturdays and Sundays, and we just feel like that being at a disadvantage in Southfield hurts our business for those hours. We have, you know, a Berkeley store down the street that we could, you know, send people to, but we prefer to keep that Southfield store doing the accurate numbers and serving the, the Southfield residents. Thank you.
So, I know, Council, I know you asked to have the proprietors here to ask them questions here, you know, their reasoning of why their, this request was made. Do you have any questions? For Councilwoman Hicks?
Yes, my question was maybe best suited for that gentleman who just came to the podium.
Yep, John.
Yeah, nice to meet you, sir.
Nice to meet you.
One of my questions was, what's the anticipated traffic between six and close?
I would, I would defer to David on that operational point.
So on a typical weekday, we see anywhere from two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred customers in transactions in that, those days during the week, weekend, where we typically would see busier traffic, we actually only see anywhere from around two-hundred to two-hundred-and-twenty-five. So we anticipate that, that we would see the equivalent amount of customers during that period of time during the weekend, if not more.
Is that a day, or is that a week, over the course of a?
Most of our business does come in the later hours of the evening, just because that is when most people are off of work and able to come visit us.
Thank you.
Dreams, do you want to answer that question as well?
About the revenue?
And you, I guess, you know, what type of increased customer base you think you'd have during that essentially three-hour window?
Yeah, if I'm gonna compare it to like what we do on like Thursday, Friday evenings, it's probably about a hundred customers in the six to nine hour that come in, about like six thousand dollars in revenue during those hours that we miss out on on Saturdays and Sundays. And it would also, another good thing, it would create another shift of employees, so it would increase, like, my pay, our jobs for residents of Southfield to work, because it's, we'd have two different shifts on Saturdays instead of just one.
Hi, my name is Paul Lutfi, two-eight-nine-nine-five Telegraph Road, associated with Dreams Canada also, and what Nadia is saying is, these customers that come, they, they drive up at six-thirty, seven o'clock, they don't even think you're closed. I mean, you know what I mean? We put a sign out there with hours so they know that we're closed. We actually put pine lines out there so they don't come on my driveway, so we don't disappoint them. But yet, they're driving off to other cities, and, you know, and like Nadia said, you don't get busy till six o'clock, five-thirty, six o'clock on a Friday. It's when they start coming in, and it's time they relax and want to go home and get their, you know, they get their, whatever they want to get, their food, their marijuana. Even in the, in the liquor business, we don't get busy till seven o'clock at night on the weekends, especially on Saturdays. So people go out late, they want to get their stuff ready and then go back home.
Thank you. Council, any other questions that you have? Councilwoman Hoag?
No questions.
No.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we approve the zoning ordinance text amendment for PZTA two-four dash zero-zero-zero-two to amend these specific sections of the charter as listed to extend the hours of operation to nine PM for both Saturday and Sunday.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Cruz, to approve PZTA two-four dash zero-zero-zero-two zoning text amendment to change the permitted hours of operation of medical marijuana provisioning centers and adult-use marijuana retailers. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
And we have two nays, motion.
Mr. President.
Oh, I'm sorry, three nays, motion passes four to three.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we introduce ordinance number one-seven-nine-five.
Support. It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Cruz, to introduce ordinance number one-seven-nine-five. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes four to three. The noes for each vote were Councilwoman Haynes, Councilwoman Banks, and Councilwoman Hicks. Is that correct? Okay.
Through the chair, I just, I just want to mention that this changes the ordinance. Each of them will still be coming back through the special land use to extend their hours of operation.
So, we changed the ordinance, they still need to come back to get final, to get approval to operate under this new ordinance for those additional hours? Correct.
Council President?
Council President, could you please point a clarification?
Repeat the no votes on the prior item?
So, so both, for, for the, for the PZTA two-four, the no votes were Councilwoman Haynes, Councilwoman Banks, and Councilwoman Hicks, and they were the same no votes to introduce the ordinance?
For the ordinance?
As well, same. Okay. Councilwoman Cruz?
Councilwoman Cruz?
Talk to the treasurer about next door for a minute, please. Okay, thank you. All right, we're up to the council portion of the meeting. We will start with Councilman Brightwell. Do you have any comments for this evening?
Excuse me?
Do you have any comments under the council portion?
Yes, one item that I mentioned last week, the last, last time we were at, the, for veterans, the Oakland, Oakland County Care House is offering parenting session, net nurturing sessions for veterans who have kids from the age of five to twelve, and they have a registration, which I failed to have, which I did not have the last time, start up to Ju, September fifteenth. The session is, be held on September the twenty-sixth, Thursday, September twenty-sixth is the first session, and it's from five-thirty to seven-thirty. At four-four-seven-five Woolworth Avenue in Pontiac, to register, please call, I'm doing this again, please register with me, call, give me a call here at, at the City Hall, two-four-eight-seven-nine-six-five-one-five-zero, and/or contact Sheronda McDonald, nine-four-seven-two-three-two-seven-eight-four-se, seven-eight-four-six, nine-four-seven-two-three-two-seven-eight-four-six. There's a parenting seminar for veterans with kids from the age of five through twelve. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Haynes?
Couple things, I just want to give a shout out to Levy Middle School, we were there this morning, and a shout out to New Hope Missionary Baptist Church. I'm sorry, New Hope Missionary Baptist Church, the Mountain Movement Men and the members were out greeting the kids at school this morning, and Principal Jackson and some of the men from the Omega Psi Phi fraternity, it was really nice to see them out supporting the kids, and the band was awesome, and we got to hear them. They have this song, and it has Southfield in it, so maybe we can get them to come and play that for us, it's really cool, I recorded it. So I thought that was really, really nice, and I think it's so important to support the schools in their mentoring the kids and helping out with the children, and, and if there are some people that have some extra time to go do some things at the school, they, you know, looking for help with the volunteers, supplies, career day, and different things of that nature. And also, celebration and congratulations to the John Wesley AME, the Methodist Church, AME Zion Church, for their hundredth year anniversary, which they celebrated on yesterday. It was a very nice event. I think it's so important to have a house of worship, a church in the community, they support the youth, and there were so many families out there, and the church has an extensive legacy of people and families coming together, and it's a very great addition to our city. And one other thing, there was a young man that talked about the button being broken at the light at twelve in Evergreen, I would see if somebody can look into that, because I think that is key to people walking. I don't know who we can talk to about that, but if that's something that we can look into and just encourage the residents, when you have a problem with something, please call, just call the city, and if someone can direct you in the right way, and, I mean, I'm glad he came out today, but if it's been a problem for a long time, we don't know unless someone tells us, and I would like for someone to look into that. I think that's really important. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. It's late, so gonna keep it brief. I don't think the gentleman is here who spoke during the communication portion, and he wanted to know what was happening with the Star Theater. That property was purchased by a church, I can't remember what.
Triumph.
Triumph Church, so even though the Star Theater is not there, again, Triumph Church owns the property, and that's all. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hicks?
I'm not gonna see you, sir.
All right, Councilwoman Hoag? I just want to remind everyone, as schools begin to start up again, to just, please obey the school bus lights, please don't pass them, please don't, they're, they're taking kids to school, just please be patient, if it's taking too long to get to work or where you need to go, plan your day better, but please do not try to pass those school buses, and even be careful once the lights of the school bus come off, because you don't know when a kid may be darting out into the street, especially around a school bus, so please be careful. With that, Mr. Mayor?
I'm gonna go.
Thank you. City Administrator?
Just to, a thank you to all of the hundred-plus volunteers who were at Bedford Woods last week, they painted a beautiful mural on one of the walls and spread an awful lot of wood chips and cleaned up trails, grateful for the community volunteers, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Attorney.
I have nothing further to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Quickly, because it is that season, I just wanted to let the audience know that we are hiring election workers to work on Election Day, starting at sixteen years of age. What a great opportunity for a young person to have to work on Election Day at the polls. And also, if you are a representative of a senior care facility, please contact our offices, we'd like us to come out and register voters, because we have seniors that, because of health conditions and other reasons, they transfer addresses, and we want to make sure they're able to vote. So, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Treasurer?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind the viewing audience that we have extended the deadline for paying the summer tax bills, because Sa, August thirty-first is gonna be on a Saturday, so, and then there's Labor Day on the second of September, so the deadline is actually extended to Tuesday, September third, that people will be able to pay their taxes without incurring any penalties, and we have a drop box that, that's available, you could drop it in there anytime over the weekend if they like, or up until the deadline of the September third in the evening. So, thank you very much. Any questions, you can contact Treasurer's office.
What's the phone number?
Two-four-eight-seven-nine-six-five-two-zero-zero, two-four-eight- 248-796-5200, 248-796-5200, and we also have information on our website, taxes.cityofsouthfield.com. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Council, we have nothing else to come before us this evening, we have, we, we did have a closed session, but due to the late hour, we are going to postpone it to be a little earlier, hopefully at the next meeting, so, we want, we want people to be fresh for the closed session. Anything else to come before the council? All right, seeing none, meeting is adjourned.